Good evening, folks, and welcome to the September 26th meeting of the Littleton Planning Commission. Tonight, as part of the regular meeting business, we'll have a public hearing on the River Park Project. If you are here to speak on behalf of that, I'd encourage you to sign up at the back table so we can call you in the order you've signed up. And if you wish to address the Planning Commission under our open public comment period before the public hearing, please note that it can't be related to the public hearing subject tonight, but please sign up for that as well. Thank you. With that, we'll call the meeting to order at 6:31. City Clerk Wendy, can you do the roll call?
Chair Coronado.
Here.
Vice Chair Allmond.
Here.
Commissioner Holdley.
Here.
Commissioner McFadden.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Neely.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Commissioner Santana.
Here.
Chair, we have quorum.
Thank you very much. Okay, next we have the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd stand and face the flag.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next we have approval of the agenda. A call around the commissioners. Are there any questions or changes to the agenda for tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to our minutes. The minutes we're reviewing and approving tonight are from the July 11th, 2022 meeting. It was included in the packet. Are there any questions or comments or a motion to approve?
Yeah, 25th.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did my own wrong. July 25th. Stand corrected.
I move to approve, based on the clerk's certification, the July 25th, 2022 minutes of the Littleton Planning Commission.
Second.
Second Commissioner Miller, I think it was. Okay. Let's see, I'll open the vote. Okay. I don't see it up on the screen. Oh, there it is. All votes are in.
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
Next item is open public comment. As I mentioned, this should not be in relation to the subject of the public hearing, but the public comment is open to anybody for up to three minutes. And just wanted to remind you that commission's not authorized by Colorado Open Meetings Law to discuss, comment, or take action on any of the issues that are raised by public comment that is not part of tonight's agenda. And we may refer to staff for additional information and to report back to the commission any concerns you might have. So clerk, do we have anybody signed up? Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody who would like to speak under the open mic? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and get right into the general business. So the general business for this evening is a public hearing. I'll read the resolution, and then the staff and the applicant will make a presentation. We'll then go ahead and open the public comment portion of that public hearing. Once it's closed, the commission will discuss, deliberate, and likely vote on the public hearing item. So the first item is PC Resolution 05-2022, approving the River Park Master Development Plan. Staff? Okay.
Thank you, Chair Coronado and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Mike Sutherland. I'm the Deputy Director of Community Development for the City of Littleton. I have what I hope will be a fairly brief presentation for the proposal, which is a conceptual master development plan for River Park. To orient you with the property, in consideration for tonight's hearing, it's a 33-acre parcel that's located at the southwest corner of Mineral and Santa Fe. Zoning of the property is corridor mixed, and it has a planned overlay district on top of it that implements the river, oh, excuse me, the Santa Fe Park Plan Development Plan. The applicant, Evergreen Devco Incorporated, and property owner, Evergreen Mineral and Santa Fe LLC, are requesting approval of a conceptual master development plan to utilize the underlying corridor mix zoning instead of the Santa Fe Park Plan Development Plan currently in effect. This image shows the 700-foot notification boundary for the property, which included 98 addresses. And that 98 addresses includes the owners and the South Park Neighborhood Association Number Two, which were notified of this public hearing tonight. This slide shows a very brief timeline of a zoning timeline for the property from its annexation in 1985 to tonight's current application. For additional orientation, the property is currently undeveloped and is used for agricultural purposes. The Angledwood City Ditch bisects the property from the south to the north. On the west side of the property is the South Platte Park, owned by the city and maintained by South Suburban Parks and Recreation District. On the north side of the property, oh, on the north side of Mineral Avenue, I should say, is the 7-Eleven gas station and the convenience store and the Mineral Avenue Light Rail Station operated by the Regional Transportation District. On the east side of Santa Fe Drive is the Union Pacific Railroad and the South Park Neighborhood. On the south side of the property is the Toll Brothers' property, which is approximately 77 acres in area. The northern side of the site is encumbered by the Jackass Gulch Flood Plain. Aaron, do I have the title of that right? Is it Jackass Gulch Flood Plain? Okay, thank you. The application itself is fairly simple in nature. It's a, it's a concept showing four large development blocks surrounding a quadrant road. All the blocks allow commercial and mixed-use development. Blocks two, three, and four allow standalone residential development. The layout of the proposed master development plan is efficient relative to its context, placing commercial and mixed use at the northeast section of the property, near the light rail station and the heaviest traffic, and thus giving a good opportunity for successful commercial development on the property. The quadrant road will reduce or mitigate traffic congestion at the intersection. The layout gives a framework for vehicular connectivity for both surrounding properties and internal to each block. Walkable, compact development is a little bit more difficult to see at this conceptual nature. However, the design includes, oh, excuse me, the, the plan provides adequate guidance for a mixed-use path and trail network with notes for connectivity within each block. And we can see a little bit more at the site plan stage, but it gives adequate guidance at this point for what we anticipate to be a walkable, relatively compact development. The plan provides building blocks for quality design, including a design theme, open space amenities, and a western boundary, which features additional building setbacks and additional landscaping beyond what is currently required by city code and the Santa Fe Park Plan Development. Regarding zoning district conformance, the plan contains several notes referencing conformance with corridor mixed zoning. Most significantly, the plan reduces commercial and mixed-use heights from a potential of 91 feet to 65 feet. The original plan included, for the, the original plan for Santa Fe Park included heights as tall as 70 feet, so this is even lower than that. There are some corrections to the allowable densities to conform to revised code standards that we just discussed a few weeks ago and were just approved by city council. Mixed-use density with sustainability bonuses should be reduced from 85 dwelling units per acre to 60 dwelling units per acre. And residential dwellers, density with sustainability bonuses should be reduced from 75 dwelling units per acre to 62 dwelling units per acre to conform with the revisions that you approved a month ago now, or more than a month ago. In staff's opinion, oh, excuse me, in staff's opinion, as detailed in the staff report, the proposed master development plan meets the review criteria and provides adequate guidance on how to apply site plan standards to this particular property. Staff recommends approval of Resolution 5, 2022, which includes two conditions related to density corrections. The applicant was advised of the conditions and had no objections. The commission may approve the resolution, which includes the recommended conditions, or remove one or more of the conditions, I should say, remove one or both of the conditions, add conditions, deny the application, or continue to adjourn to gather additional information. That concludes the staff report. Tyler Carlson and Carolyn White are here to give the applicant's presentation.
Perfect. Chairman and commissioners, thank you very much. It's wonderful to be before you tonight, and thank you for the time. My name is Tyler Carlson. I'm Managing Partner of Evergreen Development. We are the current property owner of the 33-acre River Park property, and this has been a long time in the making. We've worked with staff pretty closely over the last year since the adoption of the ULUC to, first of all, figure out what exactly an MDP is, and then to create one, one of the first that I think is coming before you. So it's been a very collaborative process, and we're grateful for the opportunity to make this application to you tonight. A little bit about who we are. Evergreen was founded in 1974 by my business partners. You know, we specialize in retail, commercial, and multifamily mixed-use developments. We've completed a number of projects up and down the Front Range, grocery anchored centers, neighborhood retail centers. We completed a mixed-use project just down the street, actually, in Littleton at Mineral and Platte Canyon on the southeast corner several years ago. And we really pride ourselves in creating projects that are enduring in the community and become a long-term community asset. We all live here in Denver, in various parts of the city, and it's important to us that as we leave fingerprints on our built environment, that we do so respectfully, and we do so taking into account the communities within which we develop. We've got a lot of projects currently in our pipeline of varying densities and of varying types, 29 currently, and we look forward to developing the River Park Project over the coming years under this MDP that's being proposed tonight. You know, the context for this site is complicated, as I think you are all very aware. We've got a light rail station to the north. We've got an amazing recreational amenity to the west with the Mary Carter Greenway. We've got a home builder neighbor to the south who's proposing their own project. We are at the busiest, you know, intersection, I think, in this part of Denver at Mineral and Santa Fe, and we've got existing neighbors across Santa Fe who carry very much what they see out their backyard. So that context has given us a heightened level of sensitivity to how we interact, interact and how we connect, you know, to these various adjacencies. There are, you know, three engineering considerations that absolutely help drive the planning exercise. The first one is traffic, and your comment letters that I think you received in your packets, and I'm sure you'll hear tonight from neighbors, is a significant issue, and it is our goal that our project, by collaborating with the city and with CDOT on the construction of the quad road, will help be a solution to those problems. I am not a quad road expert. There is a quad road expert, three seats to my left, Aaron, who I'm sure will be happy to answer any questions about, about that, but the design of the quad road and the removal of left turn movements out of that intersection and routing them through our project has been a major factor in determining where our access points are located, how our blocks are sized and designed, the width of our streets, all these things that really go into this MDP. So that has been, traffic, whether we like it or not, has been a driver of how this project is designed from day one. The next is the connectivity. You know, because we're adjacent to these regional amenities, whether it's light rail or recreation, you know, we are at the crossroads of that. And as I'll discuss later on, you know, we've tried to work very collaboratively with city staff to make sure that we are meeting the needs of all those different connection points. And they've, they've changed, frankly, since we were before you last. Even within the last 60 days, we've, I've now found out what a cycle track is, which I did not know what that was. And now we're a major part of this cycle track corridor that city staff is trying to collaborate with, with Douglas County, which is really exciting. So the connections are really key. And then the third is the Jackass Gulch Flood Plain. It's a major issue. You know, during, during significant storm events, it floods the intersection, and we are constructing, or we will construct a drainage facility along Mineral Avenue that will help to mitigate that flood plain, to channelize it, take it off the streets, and keep that intersection safe during major flood events, which is important. So we've gone through significant community outreach, most recently since the application of the MDP, we've had two different neighborhood meetings. We've had a lot of questions about the quad road and traffic, a lot of questions about connectivity, and we've had a lot of questions about the types of retail and developments, you know, development plans that we have. Some of that we have an idea on, some of it not. You know, we are here today for a very conceptual MDP. Our next step is to enter the marketplace, start putting together plans for a site plan process that we'll go through with the city, and also marketing to end users. You know, we have not been able to market this property to commercial end users because we haven't had the zoning in place. You know, that is our goal, starting tomorrow, to get going on that, we hope. And then also lots of questions about height and density, and, which is one of the reasons why we have voluntarily reduced our heights by, depending upon whether you're including the sustainability bump, you know, 24 to 28 percent, you know, down to 65 feet from the possible 80, 91 feet, because of the sensitivities of the South Park Neighborhood to maintaining their views of the mountains. We've had a lot of collaboration with Toll Brothers on ditch alignments and road alignments and how that will all, and, and trail alignments. But I do want to say, you know, publicly, that this is really the beginning of a continuation of neighborhood outreach that we will do going forward. You know, one of the things we do on all of our major projects is retail focus groups that are not required by the city or any zoning process, but are opportunities where we engage with the neighborhood at large on what types of retail and commercial uses do they want and do they see as deficient in their neighborhood so that we can be very targeted in our outreach. And so the focus group process will be something that we will start in the coming months to try to again gather input and to find the most optimal mix of users and use categories that will meet the needs of the neighborhood. And they've been very successful in the past. You know, we actually planted a potential retail boutique in one of these focus groups because the operator of this boutique in Capitol Hill didn't believe that there was a demand for their type of shop in a project we did in Stapleton Neighborhood. And we sat these two gentlemen in the back of the room and had them listen to about 30 soccer moms that keep saying that they needed a place to go buy a card and a gift and some flowers for friends before they went to a, you know, parties or birthdays. And we started lease negotiations the next day because they heard out of the mouth of the actual consumers the demand for their products. And we look forward to going through that process, you know, because the focus groups are more positively oriented towards what do you want versus what do you hate, which is the normal neighborhood meeting environment. So we look forward to that positive engagement with the neighborhood going forward. So kind of going through the different, you know, criteria of what needed to be in an MDP, you know, one of those is streets and blocks. And as indicated, you know, the quad road really has driven the design of this property into four different quadrants or four different blocks, rather, of varying sizes because we had fixed points of access that we needed to maintain on Mineral Avenue, on Santa Fe, and then to the south with Toll Brothers that really kind of dictated the alignment. We do have a significant traffic circle that will connect that roadway network. And, you know, we've spent a lot of time on the multimodal components of the interaction. So we will have, you know, two major north-south trail networks through the property. Along the Mary Carter Greenway on the west edge, we will have a 10-foot pathway that will, you know, connect Mineral Avenue along our western edge, you know, down to the Toll Brothers' property where it will continue. And then they will also have a separate, I believe, connection down to Mary Carter. Then we will have the new 16-foot multimodal cycle track along the east side of South Platte River Parkway. And what a cycle track is, for those of you who don't know, which I did not know what it was, is two five-lane bike travel lanes, so that's 10 feet for bikes, and then another six-foot pedestrian pathway. And the reason why it's so wide is that, for those of you who have ever tried to walk on like the Cherry Creek Trail or the Platte River Trail Network during peak hours, it's a little bit of a, you know, life-threatening situation. I've almost gotten killed myself by very high-speed flying bikers. And so the goal is to let the bikes go as fast as they want to go and allow pedestrians to have a safe, you know, walking space that's protected and distinct from, from the bikers. And the reason why we're building this very robust bike pathway, you know, through the property, is that the city is to have a safe walking space that's protected and distinct from the bikers. And the reason why we're building this very robust bike pathway through the property is that the city is working on making a connection through the Carson Nature Center to the north, over to the Platte River Trail system, and then continuing this through the Toll Brothers property to the south, and then ultimately through the Equine and by the Mobile Home properties to connect to the future bridge, new bridge, that'll be Santa Fe crossing over 470, which will allow bicyclists to connect from the Platte River Trail system all the way down into Highlands Ranch, which they currently can't. If you're on the Platte River Trail system right now, you go down, you hit 470, and you're on the 470 Beltway, and there's no way to get down to the Highlands Ranch, no way to get down to Sterling Ranch directly. And we are really thrilled to be part of this vision for enhanced bicycle connectivity through this part of the metro area. It's really cool, and we're grateful for the education that Aaron has given us on this, because it was not on our radar, but once I understood what it was, I'm like, actually, as a cyclist, I now see the light. So even developers can be taught new things. So the connectivity is really important. The other important connection point is, right now, there is no sidewalk on the south side of Mineral Avenue connecting over to the South Park neighborhood. And so we will be adding a pathway along Mineral. There will be new pedestrian connections established at that Mineral and Santa Fe corner, and that will be an important east-west connection point, again, enhancing the connectivity from South Park laterally west to the Mary Carter Greenway Park. Environmental protection and common open space. This is a graphic that illustrates from the MDP the current extents of the Jackass Gulch Flood Plain, which is pretty significant on the property, and the drainage channel that we will be constructing along the south side of Mineral Avenue that will be the channelization of that flood plain to remove it off of the property and create a safe place for that water to go during a flooding event. We'll be also piping the Inglewood City Ditch, which currently meanders its way through the property. That is actually really important to the city of Inglewood. They have significant water loss from open-channel ditches, not to mention they have contamination risks that they do not like, since it is a core part of their water system. So we will be channelizing that along Mineral and then along Santa Fe. That will be continued down through the Toll Brothers property, and that's been a very collaborative effort with the city of Inglewood. And then lastly, the MDP states that each one of these four blocks will have its own open-space amenity areas. But again, the details of those will be fleshed out during the site plan processes because that was not the level of detail to which we're currently planning. From a zoning perspective, we have, we are, what the right word is? We're accepting, we are incorporating ourselves into the corridor mixed-use zoning that was put on the property last year with a new ULUC. Opting in, that's a better word for it, thank you, with two caveats. One, we are limiting the location of residential development. So as Michael stated, standalone residential can only occur on blocks two, three, and four. If residential wants to be in block one, it needs to be in a mixed-use context. And then the other fairly significant thing, as I mentioned previously, was a reduction in height to 65 feet across the property versus the potential to go to 80 or 91 feet under the current ULUC. Otherwise, we will be complying with the corridor mixed zoning requirements. Quality design. We are requiring a contemporary agrarian design theme. I grew up in Brighton on a farm. I raised chickens and pigs, and so I guess you take a kid out of the farm, but you can't get it out of his head, at least architecturally. And because of the agricultural legacy of the property with the Enzer family and the nature of some of the architecture along the Santa Fe corridor with Breck Brewery and Aspen Grove and other buildings, we felt it important to continue the agrarian theme with a modern twist. And so we look forward to doing that architecturally, and we have a history of, I think, doing quality projects that will allow us to create true places where people can gather and recreate and live over the coming years as we go through those individual site plans. The phasing is a requirement of the MDP, and we believe this will be built in two phases. The first phase will be driven by the Quad Road construction and the master utility drainage infrastructure, and that will happen over the next five years. And again, any detailed questions about the schedule of the Quad Road, I will defer to Aaron. And then the second phase of development will occur after the construction of the Quad Road, and that will include the construction of South Platte River Parkway south of the traffic circle down to the Toll Brothers property. Obviously, the timing of this will be a function of end-user demand and financing and the economic climate, but it's our anticipation that in its entirety, the project will take about 10 years to develop out. And with that, I will turn the time over to Carolyn White.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, city staff, and members of the public. My name is Carolyn White. I'm Land Use Counsel for the applicant, Evergreen Development, and my role here tonight is to maybe link some of the descriptions of the project that you just heard to the specific criteria in the code. And I was just telling someone before this hearing how much I like the new ULUC and that it really only has three criteria for approval of an MDP, as compared to a lot of codes that have something like 10 or 15, and it takes a really long time to explain them all. But you also have sort of this context requirement, which is what Tyler just summarized, all the things that the MDP must address. And then you also have a list of design issues that the MDP must address. So there's those two issues, plus the actual three criteria layout, quality of design and zoning. I'm going to focus mostly on the latter three. The other thing that I want to mention, and this is maybe as much for the benefit of the public who might be watching, and myself as anyone else, and that is, the way the ULUC treats MDP is there's two different flavors of MDP, right? There's conceptual MDP and detailed MDP. And what is being presented to you tonight, what we're applying for, is the conceptual MDP. And the way I've come to think about it is it's really sort of setting the framework, describing the bubble within which future development can happen, and that's three-dimensional, right? The heights, the densities, the uses, the setbacks, all of the specific requirements of how those site plans have to be laid out. But it doesn't show each individual site plan and exactly how it's going to be laid out. That's the next stage of development that comes along when each site plan comes forward. And so I'm mentioning that only because, as it relates to interpreting the criteria, part of what we're talking about here is whether or not this MDP document gives enough information for you all and the city when future site plans come forward to be able to make an informed decision about whether and to what extent those future site plans conform, not only with this MDP, but with the criteria in the ULUC. And as was just mentioned, this application does not propose to change anything about the underlying zoning, the CM zoning, all the uses and densities, and everything's the same, except it proposes to impose greater restrictions within this development than what would be allowed under the zoning in terms of height and limiting residential on block one to requiring it to be within a mixed-use environment. So we're building the bubble, and we're making the bubble a little bit smaller than it would otherwise be allowed under straight CM zoning. That's sort of how I think of it. So this just summarizes the general context requirements. I won't repeat them because Tyler Carlson just did a really thorough job of explaining each of them to you. The main requirement, as it relates to MDPs in the code, is that the MDP must speak to each of these. And as I think you just heard, and as the staff report concludes, the MDP does, in fact, contain fairly detailed information about each of these items. The other category before we get to the criteria is the design principles, and this is an evaluation of whether and to what extent the MDP promotes and will allow and support development on future site plans that create a walkable layout, context-sensitive streets, connectivity, as was discussed, and so on, and overall livability. Again, maybe a little hard to judge in great detail when we're not at the site plan level yet. And then finally, we get to the three actual approval criteria, which is layout, quality design, and zoning district conformance. So speaking first to layout, as was concluded and analyzed in the staff report, the MDP does provide for balanced adjacencies, meaning that it creates both connectivity and also mitigation of potential impacts on all of the differing uses that are surrounding it. So we talked about pedestrian connectivity, bicycle connectivity, and vehicular connectivity, and also the fact that by laying the Quad Road over this property, it also divides it up into four sort of right-sized blocks for individual development within this in such a way that it will fit nicely into the context of what's around it as well, particularly given the fact that we're going to limit the height overall considerably relative to what would otherwise be allowed in the CM district. The other thing that was mentioned is that each one of these four blocks is going to be required by the MDP to have its own open space or amenity area, and so each one will be somewhat able to service its own needs in that department, as well as being connected to each other through these various pedestrian paths and walkways. And so as staff concluded, and we hope you will also conclude, it does meet the criteria for layout for an MDP. Second criteria, quality design. Quality design is addressed in great detail on Sheet 7 of the MDP, which explains a little bit about the contemporary agrarian theme. Tyler already explained to you some of the origins of that theme, and for some of you with a planning background, you already know that sometimes establishing a consistent and coherent theme is just the first element of establishing a quality design regime in any given development. So there's a lot more explanation on Sheet 7, which I am not qualified to explain to you about how that contemporary agrarian theme is to be achieved, but that's something that will also become a standard for judging the future site plans as it goes forward. And the idea is to make this architecture be compatible with the other uses that are around it, such as the brewery and Aspen Grove, and there are still some remaining rural uses up and down this corridor as well. You already saw some examples of prior Evergreen projects, and we have some illustrative examples here, and this really demonstrates the ability of this particular developer to execute mixed-use projects with high-quality design. So the second criterion is also met for the MDP. And then finally, zoning district conformance. We've talked about that quite a bit, so I won't reiterate. There's no proposed change in the uses or the densities from the zoning, proposed change from the height, proposed change to restrict residential on block one to mixed-use only. Other than that, it will rely 100% on and conform with the underlying zoning standards, and so it does demonstrate compliance with the applicable zoning district and design principles. I just want to briefly mention also the comprehensive plan guiding principles, and these are the five principles in the comprehensive plan: anchored, authentic, connected, active, and engaged. And again, without sort of repeating points that have been made previously, this MDP is really designed to make sure that this development, when built, will achieve all of those things. The authenticity comes through with that link to the agrarian history. The connectivity, this is an extremely connected site through all modalities visually and physically, and also promotes active lifestyle. It will be very easy to bike or walk or use alternative transportation to get to this location, or it will be easy to live here and also be able to access a whole host of amenities and services without leaving this development. And hopefully, these graphics will demonstrate to you what an engaging, vibrant and engaging community this is going to be when developed. So with that, the MDP, before you meets all the criteria in the code, we look forward to the opportunity to answer any questions during the Q and A period and to respond, following public comment, to any additional issues that come up. Thanks very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for that presentation. We're going to go right to the public hearing first, but then the Commissioners will have an opportunity to ask both staff and the developer any questions for additional information. But with that, I would like to go ahead and open the public hearing at 7:07 PM.
Chair, just as a clarification, it's opening the public comment portion. Thank you. The hearing is already...
Yeah, we're opening the public comment session of the public hearing. Okay, thank you. Okay, so I just wanted to give some general rules here. This is a public hearing, and members of the public are invited to provide input and feedback on their request before us. If you've signed up, I'll call you in the order you signed up. I'd ask you to limit your comments to the three-minute timeframe, so everyone has an opportunity to be heard. And I remind you to speak from the mic, state your name and address. Try not to repeat what others have said, and respect each other's opinions by retaining, restraining from applause or catcalls. Please exercise respect for your fellow citizens and city staff. So we have some folks that are signed up here, and I invite you forward.
I guess that's the benefit of going first. I'm not going to repeat anybody just yet, so. Good evening, Council, staff, and citizens. My name is Drew Lang. My office is at 2329 West Main Street. I'm here on behalf of the Littleton Business Chamber Board of Directors to voice support regarding the new proposal, master plan development by Evergreen. Evergreen is not currently a member of Littleton Business Chamber, but we hope they might be someday down the road. Now that the city's ULUC is in effect, each proposed block will need to hear to ULUC, so I think they'll do that. As a potential and future contributor to the city's tax base, the chamber is excited to see further renderings of what the future of the River Park development might be. I have personally seen the quality that Evergreen produces, as well as the quality tenants that the project typically attracts. We believe that this project will be beneficial to the community as a whole, so please greenlight this project, much like was done before. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Pat Dunahay. I live in District 4 and work in District 3. This project is less than a half-mile from my home. My widow Mary's memorial outdoor classroom is there. I've lived there for 27 years, so I feel like I speak from a real passionate place about this piece of ground. I've driven by the weeds for 27 years and always hoped that there would be a decent project there. I think my dog could throw up an apartment building and be successful in this environment. However, I think doing a real, true mixed-use program, we want somebody like Evergreen and the quality of Evergreen. So I'm going to say tonight I'm in support of them, maybe more than the details to the project. I think they're the right developer for this piece of ground. I didn't get, I've spoke with them, I haven't gotten into the weeds of this to see how much of it is commercial and how much of it is going to be residential, but from what I understand, we got a shot at some substantial commercial with these folks, and I think you guys have guided them there, and I think the city leadership has guided them there. And I think we should keep them there. So my hope is for some cool boutique businesses that you can't find on every street corner. I think they have the ability to bring some pretty cool tenants to the property, so that's why I'm excited about it. We knew it was going to get developed. I respect the challenges that they've had owning that piece of ground the last five years, but I think I respect your volunteerism way more, and I know you've pushed them back and pushed hard on them to do the right thing, and I think they're getting close to that. And I know you and city leadership will guide them to that point. So I'm excited to have some new development on the corner of Mineral and Santa Fe. I live, my house is on the Platte Park. I'm very blessed to have that. I hope they take that blessing as serious as I do with my home. The Platte Park is so special that I encourage you to keep that as cool and as authentic as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Judith Smith.
I didn't sign up to speak. I just sent a note.
Okay, you're welcome to if you'd like, but that's fine, too. Lynn Christensen. Lynn Christensen.
My name is Lynn Christensen. I live in District Three, and I'm opposed to the plan. I want to begin by saying that the ULUC is the legal standard for all land use decision, and the plans must comply with the entire code. With that said, according to the MDP Code general context, the plan needs to illustrate protection and preservation of riparian areas, wetlands, and water bodies. Page Three says, "The site does not include any sensitive areas requiring environmental protection." This statement is false, according to the Colorado Wetland Information Center, because wetlands and riparian areas do exist along the city ditch shown in my handout. A plan to protect these areas was not provided. Therefore, this plan does not comply with the code. General context requirements for intensity, maximum gross floor areas, and building coverage are missing. General context for the plan needs to illustrate parking. Page Five of the plan just restates the code. Parking lots are not illustrated on the maps. The visual renderings show a lot of buildings, but no specific parking. This requirement was not met. The code states that the MDP conceptual must provide evidence of adherence to Chapter Three Design and Layout Standards. Context-sensitive streets shall be laid out in a hierarchy with a main street. This requirement is not mentioned or illustrated in the plan. According to the Submittal Requirements Checklist, a lot of information is missing. Could staff please explain why? I also have unanswered questions that were previously emailed. The summaries to the neighborhood meetings are not in compliance with the code. Specifically, the summary of attendees was not included. The city's public hearing protocols online state that staff is responsible for entering into the record applicable comp plan documents by reference. This information is missing. Policy HNN1 says to encourage varied housing type, sizes, and price points that are attainable per prospective owners and renters at all levels of income. So how does the plan specifically comply with this policy? Will senior living and multifamily residential units mentioned be rented or for sale? And how many rental versus for-sale units are currently on the DAL? Policy LNC6 says promote development decisions that reduce traffic congestion. Is this development or any other development contingent on the Santa Fe Action Plan results? If not, why not? Commissioners, staff recommended this plan that did not comply with the code. The applicant did not provide a plan to protect wetlands and riparian areas. I'm asking that the plan be denied and resubmitted with the proper requirements...
That's time.
...rather than include conditions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alexia Singer?
It's me. I just, I don't want to speak. I just thought I was supposed to sign in.
Okay.
So I did.
All right. John Marchetti?
I won't be speaking.
Hi, I'm Christine Hancock. I just have a couple of quick questions, and I've never done this before. So one of my questions has to do with the quad road through the development, and this will tell you my ignorance on the whole process. But it talks about, you know, the quad road, and we live up by Jackass Hill Park. And I have a question about how long, if you're coming down from Mineral, and how long if you have to utilize the quad road, will it add to your drive to take these left turns? And how long, when you go through a development such as this with a roundabout, will it add? Because we'll be taking left turns from Santa Fe, from Mineral, multiple times a day. So that's one of my questions. Another question I have is, and this has more to do probably with the ULUC process, is it seems inappropriate that only 98 residents, which was the South Park area, were the only people that were notified. And I realize that's probably what was appropriate, but it seems like there's so many more areas and so many more housing areas that are affected by all of this, that that's something that should be maybe re-looked at, because there's so many more people that are affected by this quad road, so that the development, there's so many more people that should have gotten notification, I feel, of this. Another comment I have is, one of the things that was brought up tonight, it talked about the four quads. Three of them was mentioned by the, I think by the city planner, that three would have residential. But in the presentation from the developer, developer, excuse me, it said that all four could have residential. The fourth one on the northeast corner, because it's mixed-use, could also have residential. So I just wanted some clarification on that one, because it sounded like all four quads could actually have residential. And then my final concern also goes back to the quad road. And I'm wondering if anybody has looked at how much new traffic is going to be pushed up to Prince Street by people avoiding the quad road? Because right now, we're already seeing, it feels like people avoiding this intersection and using Prince Street, and that's including commercial traffic. So I don't know if that's part of the study, is people avoiding this intersection and taking Prince to avoid getting on Santa Fe. So anyway, those are my, my questions or concerns with this. Thank you.
No, those are all great questions, and we'll have staff answer those when we get to the Q and A. Thank you.
My name is Linda Knufinkel, and I live in the Fourth District. And I generally have comments and concerns about how the application doesn't meet the ordinance. There's three components where the application doesn't meet the ordinance, and I will talk about that in my next slide. The application does not meet commercial mixed-use zoning, and you have no idea what the developer will do with mixed-use, and that's line 38 on the code. It is not laid out in an efficient manner. You don't know how the development will be laid out. It's line number 28. And does it achieve an aesthetic appeal as required by line 33? I don't think so. And also, there's an issue of transitions, too. So why would you take the quad road when you can turn left onto Platt River Parkway and then turn left on to Aspen Grove Way onto Santa Fe Drive? So that's kind of a little bit awkward, and that's one thing I would do instead of go on to the quad road. So the development has to meet the code, and it does not. The MDP must adhere to Section 10-3-2-B-D, mixed-use development layout and design. And this was kind of gone over a little bit, but the mixed-use development layout and design is designed to favor the pedestrian more so than the automobile. So this isn't occurring the way it is. A walkable layout. The development shall be organized within block lengths that facilitate walkability or include a provision for pedestrian accessways. Context-sensitive streets. The streets shall be laid out in a hierarchy within a main street and a mixed-use to the neighborhood connectors that tie into the existing street system. Parking, parking shall be provided on-street to the maximum practical extent within the parking lots or garages that are placed on the interior of the blocks accessed from the east side or rear buildings or alleyways. Connectivity, pedestrian or bicycle systems shall provide connections to peripheral sidewalks and trails and open spaces in parks. The parks and landscape areas shall be located to provide direct connections within and between neighborhoods and areas of employment and commercial services. Resource integration, natural resources and environmental features shall be focal points. And building and street relationships, buildings shall be designed in relationship to streets directly located to create a sense of enclosure and street environment rich with street-level business. So the beginning of the code says that, that it is intended to explain, "A proposed development is sufficient in detail to enable an informed review and decision-making." So I wanted to mention that as part of the beginning of the code. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Linda. Next up, I have Andy Hancock. Andy here?
I have to step out.
Okay.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Pam Chapbor. I live a block and a half from here. So first off, this, I think, appeared Thursday or Friday, and this is Monday. And this is North answer, which has been a point, a focal point for hundreds of people since 2016, when developers started. I'm sorry, but the city is not giving the public enough engagement with this. And Planning Commission, to build the trust with the community, I think you should continue the public hearing to another date so that more people can be notified. I think another speaker already spoke to this. I agree with her. And also, she made the point that nothing in here is quantified. What is the impact of the quad road? How many cars will change their routes or be delayed? What will the delays be? There are ways of estimating these traffic impacts. No quantification. Also, no estimated quantification of the commercial to residential to other uses. And this is fatal. Your name is Planning Commission. You are here to do due diligence on our behalf to assure that this project, which is huge in Littleton, its impact is huge, is balanced and will perform for us. And it's great that they have the intention there. In fact, I want to compliment them for their height limits, for their consciousness of connectivity and working with Toll Brothers. That's great. But they must supply some quantification of the impacts, and none of that is in your packet, Planning Commission. I had a comment in here, and basically, the staff's position seems to be, "Trust us. We'll just make sure everything is complied with in-site plan." And no, that's not your job, Planning Commission. Your job is on our behalf to perform due diligence. And as Linda read all of the paragraphs, or I think that was great, thanks for reading those, these are not quantified. They're not expressed in detail. There's some nice sketches, but there's no streets inside of there. You can't confirm any of these things are going to be met in the plan. And that's the requirement, in the plan. You need to be able to see it to evaluate the impact. There's no quantification, and it's just not specific enough. So the plan, the staff's report seems to be, "Trust us." And I am telling you, your charge in our code and charter is trust but verify. It's great that these plans are there, and they look great and sound great. But your job is to verify, and there's not enough information in this packet to verify. Planning Commission, please stick up for the city. This is a huge impact. This is defining. You really need to take your stand here and make a stand and say, "Planning Commission needs this data in order to make these decisions." Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't see anybody else signed up to speak, but I wanted to just see by raise of hand, is there anybody else from the public that would like to come up? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public comment portion of the public hearing I'd like to first give staff an opportunity to answer the direct questions from Christine Hancock, if you could. And then, I know I have a number of questions here, but the commissioners will go around here and allow everybody to ask questions before we, anybody makes a motion.
So Chair, did you want a specific response to Ms. Hancock's question about the quad road?
Yeah, I think those were the only questions that were directed at staff. As I recall, there was one about the quad road, how, if it, if the analysis could predict how much time it might add to somebody moving through the intersection. There was a question about why were there only 98 notifications that went out? There was a question about whether all four blocks can have a residential component? And there was a question about how much traffic might be pushed to other intersections like Prince Street due to the quad road configuration.
That matches my notes, too. Thank you. Regarding the notification, we do send notification, written, mailed notification to properties and addresses within 700 feet of the property boundary. In addition to that, we realize that that is somewhat limited in its scope. We also have the property posted. Two large signs were posted on the property. And also, a newspaper notification was printed in the Denver Post. So we try and make the, the public hearings available to all citizens. If we could, we'd mail everyone, but that is impractical for the, for the mailed notifications. So it's, it's limited by code to 700 feet, and that's where the 98 addresses came from. But we do try and get additional participation through neighborhood meetings and, and posting the, signposting the property and newspaper addresses. So I appreciate that comment. Clarification of residential use, the, the three blocks, Blocks Two, Three, and Four, allow standalone residential use. Whereas residential use, as Ms. Hancock pointed out, is allowed in Block One, but only as part of a mixed-use development. So that would have to have a, a component of commercial use in the same building as a residential use. And there, we're not talking about a clubhouse or rec center for the residential use. We're talking about a, a separate commercial use that's in the same building. And then I'll turn it over to Mr. Human to address the traffic concerns, or the traffic
Sorry. Good evening. Aaron Human, City Traffic Engineer. A couple of questions that came up about the quad road that I wrote down. First of all, how much added time is it going to add? So it's a little complicated, because it depends how you approach that question. Are we talking about someone who is already at the intersection? How long is it going to take them to get through there? Or are you talking about how long it takes people to get to the intersection first and then proceed through it? The idea of the quad road is not limited just to the immediate area. It's going to help alleviate traffic up and down the Santa Fe corridor, as, as well as along the Mineral corridor. So when you look at that, someone starting, for example, from downtown Littleton, who's headed south on Santa Fe to get to the Jackass South Park area, they're going to have, see a lot less congestion that whole way from downtown Littleton to get to Mineral. So they're going to see a, a great reduction in the amount of time it takes them to get, drive that length. Now, when they actually get to the intersection, if the intention is to turn left, yes, it will add a little time for that movement. But overall, it's going to save everybody a lot of time, and our focus is more on all the traffic, not just one movement of the traffic. So we're trying to improve conditions for everybody in general. So our analysis shows that it will not add time, except if you're driving in late at night, yes, you'll, you'll see a little added time, because you'll have to go a little out of your way in order to make that left turn movement. The other question about adding traffic or diverting traffic to Prince Street, again, because we're relieving congestion on Mineral and Santa Fe, people are using Prince Street today because it's so congested on Santa Fe. So if you're trying to get from the South Park area up to downtown Littleton, again, it's a straight shot to just use Prince Street rather than hopping on Santa Fe, even though it has a higher speed limit. But with the addition of the quad road, our hope is that we'll be alleviating traffic, and it'll make it easier to get between those areas, and people won't divert to lesser streets like Prince.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful to me. I hope it's helpful to your questions. Are there reports online that citizens can see to get more information?
Yeah, absolutely. We have a webpage on the Littleton website that if you go to the Littleton website and just type... just type in the search, "Santa Fe and Mineral," it'll bring up the webpage for that project, the Quad Road project, it has several links that are on there, past information, the original study that was done to determine why a Quad Road, the overall study that was done for the Evergreen and Toll Brothers development is on there also, that people can review, so, and there's lots of information in there, I know it's very detailed and, and hard for just a common person to understand everything, but I'm always available, if there's questions, to contact me via phone or email, if you have questions about it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now it's time for questions, either staff or the, and/or the applicant, I'll start at your end, Commissioner McPadden.
Thanks to everybody for very informative presentations and everything, and as always, appreciate all the work by, by staff. So, I think I read somewhere in the plan that all parking would be internal for resident, did I read that somewhere, about the, either the residential part, or, I'm sure not all the retail is internal, but?
Yeah, correct, one of the planning requirements there is that parking lots will be internalized, which means, you know, buildings will be facing the public streets, and then the parking lots will be shielded by buildings or landscaping, you know, from the streets, so that it's got a more urban environment, because of the proximity to the light rail station.
Got it. Thanks. Let's see, so there were some fairly, this is to staff, there were some fairly substantial, for lack of a better term, accusations that this conceptual plan does not meet all of the submittal requirements, and I myself, I'm still confused over what the submittal requirements are for a conceptual plan versus an actual plan, which is also different than a site plan. So, I'm asking staff, so that none of us up here have to try to research 10,000 things here, was there anything in the list you heard that this applicant did not submit, and is therefore in violation of some part of the, the way the city operates, these, these things?
Thanks for that question. Looking over the submittal requirements, there are general submittal requirements for master development plans, for both contextual plans and detailed plans.
So it's both? It's for both, right?
There are separate, separate application requirements for the, the two different types. So, for conceptual master development plans, as Ms. Christensen pointed out, there's a requirement to show context, location, scale, and design, density, intensity of development, parking and circulation, streets, common open space, environmental protection and phasing. And the plan in front of you tonight is very conceptual in nature, but references each of those components. To some degree, the, the plan might involve some further explanation of how it, how it addresses some of the site plan particular components. So, Ms. Christensen mentioned in particular environmental protection. The, the plan does have a corridor, or a, not a corridor, a floodplain that runs through it, that will be removed through a prior approval of the Planning Commission, that, that will be channelized. There is a, there is a, the Inglewood City Ditch that runs through that property. We did send the referral to the State Department of Wildlife for any, any of their comments related to environmental protection, and received no comments from them. There, so, there's a matter of degrees as to how you, how an individual might view the, the ways in which this plan addresses environmental protection. And it does address that there are areas of, of environmental sensitivity related to floodplain currently, those will be changed through a prior, previous approval to be channelized, and then, as we get to the site plan stage, there are code, code provisions to protect existing trees that we need to work through at that level. But I do believe that all of the, the application requirements that are listed in the code were addressed to some degree in this plan. Is it to the degree that everyone in the, in the audience, or the, might, might wish, you know, perhaps not, but they are addressed. And I think it is appropriate to act on the plan as a complete application that meets the code standards.
I appreciate the explanation there, I, I know I asked it before on July 25th as well, but, different hearing, but, and Mr. Human, if I'm not mistaken, the Quad Road decision has been made regardless already, is that correct?
I sure hope so, because I've been designing it for the last year. Yes, we went through a process of coming up with why the Quad Road, we looked at many, many different options first, before coming up with that, it's in agreement with ZDOT, who owns Santa Fe, and it's their regional traffic that we're trying to divert, so, yes.
I thought so, okay, thank you. And I guess, one last question I have for the developer, it's not necessarily a piece of the criteria to make a decision, but I do think people do seem to want to know, and you, I think you stated you may have answered it in the, the public meetings, approximately what percentage are we thinking, or are you thinking residential versus commercial, multifamily, whatever, or is it still, as you said, you've got to, when you're getting around to stick shovels in the ground, you got to see what the next 15 years are going to look like, and whether or not that's what you think goes there at that time, or, or what?
Yeah, as, as I indicated, you know, we're going to start a leasing effort on the commercial retail side, you know, tomorrow, we hope. Right now, we're anticipating that only one of the four blocks will have likely freestanding residential on it, which will be Block Three, the other three blocks, One, Two, and Four, I believe, we plan to have, you know, commercial uses on those property, on, on that, those parts of the property. It's, you know, for all the reasons that the neighbors hate the intersection, the retailers love it, you know, they love the traffic counts, they, they want people congested and stuck there, so that they get off and, you know, pull over for dinner. And so, we, we do believe there's a strong retail potential specifically, and we're very excited about the opportunity to create something that's synergistic with Aspen Grove. So, the predominance of the property will be commercial, and again, right now, we think that likely only one of the four planning areas will be solely residential.
Thanks for that. Retail with multi-unit-on-top kind of thinking, or, you know, first-floor retailer, or freestanding retail, just trying to get an idea of conceptual plan?
It'll probably be a mix of both, you know, in, in the, the past of this project, we've had office users who are interested in doing, being involved in mixed-use buildings, we've had hospitality users interested in, you know, ground floor, you know, restaurants, you know, to support their, the hospitality, you know, above, you know, we've looked at vertical mixed-use residential over retail, we, you name, we've looked at it, and again, it's, it's no secret, this is a wonderful community from a demographic standpoint, you know, people are blessed with, you know, some solid incomes in this neighborhood, and that gives you, you know, a level of strength from a retail standpoint, because there's a lot of consumer spending potential in this area. And so, that gives us opportunities to explore vertical mixed-use, you get into more suburban locations, and the retailers are really only interested in a very traditional suburban, single-story format, but, you know, this is not Highlands Ranch, you know, there's an urbanity that's here because of the light rail station, because of the traffic, because we're within the Beltway, and we think there could be some, you know, really exciting vertical mixed-use potentials. So I think it'll be a mixture of both, of some single, single-story commercial, but also some vertical mixed-use.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Sure thing.
Mr. Chairman, that's, that's all I've got, thank you.
Actually, I have another question for the applicant, thank you. So, you're aware we have three criteria to evaluate the, the application on, and the, one of them, or the second one, is quality of design, and I appreciate the narrative about the architectural style, thank you. I'll, I'll just read some of the language, I guess what I'm looking for is just an idea of other sort of unique elements, such as human-scale amenities, integration of civic spaces for public interaction, and protection from environmental elements that may be, that you're seeing, that may be included in the design. It's not specifically mentioned here, just curious if, if you can give us some ideas of what you're thinking about there.
Yeah, absolutely, I, obviously, this conceptual stuff is great, I love the site planning phase of all of our developments, because that's when the rubber hits the road, and we really have the opportunity to create intimate spaces, and, you know, we have some opportunities and we have some challenges, the opportunities are the connectivity, I mean, having some of this regional trail network potential is unbelievable, to have two major trails, or three if you count Mineral, through the property, including a regional cycle track, is really exciting, because we're going to be able to get people to this property that would otherwise not be able to get to other locations, so I think that's, that's the opportunity, the challenge is the raw amount of carbon monoxide coming off of Santa Fe. I mean, it is a lot of traffic, and it's a lot of, lot of emissions, and it's a lot of noise, you know, that goes with that, and so, the, the internalization of the parking lots is what we had to speak to for the MDP or criteria, but we're also really talking about the internalization of all of the plaza and amenity areas, because we need to use the buildings to defend the human-scale elements of this project from the streets, because the surrounding streets are very high-traffic. The nice thing is, because of the Quad Road design, it's chopped up this larger 33-acre property into some pretty digestible development nodes of, you know, three to 10 acres, and you can do some really neat things at that scale, with, you know, perimeterizing the buildings around the property, internalizing parking plaza areas, so that you can create actual places that people want to linger at, and I'm, this is the reason why I'm in this business, is to create these places, where you can come and sit down, and your kids can run around, you're not worried about them getting hit by a car, you're not worried about, you know, the ozone, you know, coming off of the, of the traffic, and then we're going to have some, and to have the, the end users that can attract, you know, a, a customer that wants to stay, you know, it's, there's a place for drive-throughs, and there's a place for, you know, automotive-oriented stuff, and then there's, there's other opportunities where you can create unique environments, where, where people can want to stay and linger for a longer period of time, where you can have, like we, like we've done in, you know, the Stapleton neighborhood, where you can have swing dance classes and have, you know, poets come and do poetry reading in the plazas, I mean, that is what we want to create here. And to be honest with you, that's, you know, no knock to our northern neighbor, that's the deficiency of Aspen Grove. You know, there's a lot of beautiful boxes that you can buy a lot of stuff in, but there's a deficiency in really neat, unique outdoor gathering spaces, and that's where we think we have an opportunity, you know, we are working confidentially, and staff knows, with a destination, you know, celebrity-driven restaurant concept, that is going to be one of the coolest restaurants in this metro area, by far, in Block Four, you know, and it's going to be integrated with the trail, it's going to look over to the Mary Carter Greenway, the mountain views, and have outdoor programming spaces that are going to be unparalleled. I mean, there's some really exciting stuff that we get to do here, that I'm just like chomping to get going on, but those are some of the opportunities and some of the challenges, that's a long-winded answer, because I get passionate about this stuff.
And so I know, it looks like, in the application, it talks about that you'll comply with the necessary open space requirements, percentage of open space. Do you think you'll exceed that percentage, or?
Oh, for sure, yeah, we'll definitely exceed it, and it's, it's trying to create open space areas where it's going to be utilized, you know, not just pretty to look at, and, and that's where we try to, you know, combine, you know, the landscape with the hardscape, you know, with, you know, the, the building defense, and so you create these, again, humanistic areas where you want to, just naturally, you subconsciously want to be, and that's the goal, but no, I think we definitely, definitely will exceed it.
That's all for me. Thank you.
All right. So, on connectivity, I had a question about, and this could also perhaps be for the, the city staff as well, I didn't see an indication of a connection from the, sort of the northeast quadrant directly to the intersection of Santa Fe and Mineral, or an indication of pedestrian connection, you know, along Santa Fe, obviously, it's not a great environment, however, one does see people walking that corridor occasionally, so wondering about whether there will be a connection from that northeast, to that intersection from the northeast part of the site.
Yeah, there, there will be absolute connection to that northeast corner of the site, you know, to the hard intersection of Mineral and Santa Fe, absolutely, I think there's even a bus stop planned there, is that right, Aaron?
There's a bus stop there today, but we're working with RTD to move the bus stop along the Quad Road.
Yeah, that's right, thank you. So, there will be connectivity to there, there will not be a pedestrian pathway along Santa Fe, we very strategically internalized that along South Platte River, within the cycle tracks shared use path, just because of the sheer danger of walking along that state highway at high speeds, Aaron, any other comments on that?
No, I think you're exactly right, I mean, we made a conscious decision that we wanted to internalize pedestrians and cyclists, not expose them out on Santa Fe, so, we're attracting them internal from the edges by giving them a very attractive place to go and, and walk and bike, that's far away from Santa Fe as possible, but then we also have the connection to get them to that intersection if they need be from, along Mineral with a nice new sidewalk and trail along the south side also.
And then, regarding the Quad Road and sort of the design, as you get to the roundabout, and then head north-south through the site, would you say that, you know, that's designed to serve as the main street for the development?
Yeah, it absolutely is the main street, and, you know, there will be, you know, limited access points along the Quad Road, you know, to speed vehicles along, I think, for throughput, throughput, but also to minimize pedestrian interactions with traffic, that was really important to us, but absolutely, it's, it's the main street, it'll be the focus point, the buildings will be oriented to the Quad Road physically, to create an urban edge, and, you know, we selfishly want to do that, especially on that east side of South Platte River Parkway, because that's where the cycle track is at, so we want to be able to tie in the multimodality of those, of that trail corridor with the businesses that are going to be right there.
Thank you, and I, I think that's the, the last I have for you, but I suspect you may be back at the podium in a bit.
Thank you very much, appreciate that, it's good exercise.
Getting, getting steps in incrementally. I did see in some of the written comments, some concerns about, you know, water supply, and wondering if Denver Water, who is Littleton's water supplier, had any concerns about the ability to serve the site?
Denver Water did provide a will-serve letter, or, yes, they did provide a will-serve letter with the application, so we don't have any concerns about the water supply.
So, per Denver Water, the water supply is adequate to serve this development. Salsuburban Parks and Recreation District, you know, I saw online in the DAL, the Development Activity List, which is a great place to find documents related to projects in Littleton, you know, it, it appeared that Salsuburban Parks and Rec District had been in contact with staff and the applicant, and had worked through the issues, and did not have any concerns regarding the open space based on the design presented to us tonight?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. One other concern I saw was a concern about, you know, the potential for more impervious surface from this development, say, as compared to its active farmland now, causing perhaps a risk for increased flooding. If someone from staff could just give a general overview about how stormwater design is treated, and, you know, how does a developer have to address post-development flood control versus pre-development flood control?
Take that one.
Looking at the engine. Looking at the engineering.
So, uh, so historic rates are important to flood control and drainage. And we will require a drainage study once we have a, a site plan where we have the specifics of permeable versus non-permeable areas on a, on a specific part of the site. That will be, that will have to have a drainage study that is, that is produced with the, with the site plan. With the drainage study, they will analyze all those elements and, uh, produce no greater than historic flows from the, from the site. That will involve, I'm sure, detention and water quality. So there's, uh, there's two different, those two different components are, are looked at independently. And, um, yeah, there, we should not, uh, uh, see any more than historic flows from the, from the, from the site and probably, uh, not, not point source, but, uh, more of a sheet flow, uh, condition that goes to the detention pond. Did you have anything to add to that, Jen?
One thing I can add is that we have been working very closely with, um, my flood district, our engineers, developers' engineers. We have a bi-monthly meeting that we have with all utility providers on this site, whether it be CDOT, Denver Water, South Platte Renewal. So all the utilities associated on this site, we've been meeting pretty regularly. And the discussion of drainage and reformulation of Jackass Gulch has been a huge part of those conversations, as well as conversations with the city of Anklewood and Anklewood Ditch. So all those utilities and providers have been involved in conversations for three years.
More than that.
Yeah. So, and addressing the, the drainage and potential flood risk.
All right. I think those are all the questions I have for now.
Thank you. I'll go to the other end. Patrick?
Thank you. Hold on. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm heartened to see your proposal include a number of pedestrian biking infrastructure elements. I think that's really important and part of our comp plan. So regarding the layout portion of the criteria, I think you've done a good job there. I'd like to reiterate that I do believe that we should have a sidewalk access on the north side of the property, I mean, the east side of the property along Santa Fe. I realize that you'll likely have very little, uh, traffic by pedestrians or bicyclists. However, we have another residential property going, going into the south. And if you go even further down that road, there are other residences. And we currently see people use the side of Santa Fe today. And it's very risky and it's made more risky the more we, we barrier it off. So I just ask staff, when you look at the site plan, to reconsider that opposition. And I say that not just for the users of the road, but also the overall future impact on Littleton itself as pressure builds on Santa Fe to become a channelized freeway structure. And the, the fewer pedestrian biking and stoplights and crossings that exist there, the easier it is to become a freeway and to move in that direction. And that's not the direction our comp plan calls for. So, and I just believe on all facing sides of a development, there should be sidewalks. That's just, I, I like what Tyler said about the urbanity of Littleton. We were a city in our original founding and we use that in our name. And urbanity is part of the matrix here. And that means sidewalks originally. So I just put that out to you. I, as far as the bicycle components, I think it's really wonderful because it is connected. I hope you'll consider, th, this is more a flaw in our, our land use code that we don't require you to put in bicycle parking and secured storage for bicyclists. But as this community moves into a future where we emphasize walking and biking to these amenities, restaurants, shopping, storing your bicycle safely is a really important thing. And I will hope, I hope the applicant will consider that in the final site plan development. These are more like comments. This is a more, a bigger question for the commission and, and staff to, you're, it, it's interesting to me that you're committing to the lower heights. You're locking yourself out of anything over 60, 62 feet. I don't know if that's a, I, I would like our commission to consider removing that condition from their plan, so that they're not limited by that. And I say this for a number of reasons. One, we're facing a number of historic challenges, uh, climate challenges, water challenges. And the sustainability bonuses that we offer in our plan allow you to have greater height and density if you do things for sustainability reasons. And in, in a development process that's one to 10 years like this, you may find that you want these things. We may want solar panels on these buildings. You may want, um, increased affordable housing components in one of the later stages. And that would get you greater height. I don't see an advantage in locking out the height in this, um, this phase, at the conceptual plan. I would say personally, we should consider removing that so that you have the flexibility to do what we're, what we have the sustainability bonuses for. These are things we want developers to do. And if we want you to do them, I feel you'd be hamstrung if you say all developments of, over all phases will never be more than 60 feet. It takes away a lot of your, your gain for that. So that's something I don't know if we can even do in terms of our approval conditions, but it's something I'd like us to consider, because there's, there is a value to those bonuses and sustainability gains.
To answer that really quickly, obviously, those are things you guys can discuss during discussions once you close the public hearing and have all of the evidence in front of you. And obviously, we can weigh in if you have specific questions on that.
Okay. One last thing, again, flaw not in the proposal, uh, or in our code. Whatever parking structures internalized or however they're placed, it would be not, I'm just saying this for the staff more than, than you guys, that it would be nice if the parking that is built into these facilities had E V charging or conduits, at least for electrical hookups, at all the parking internally. Right now, it may not seem like an important element to build, but to future-proof these parking structures, I mean, in 2035, there may not be any internal combustion engine cars sold. And so we'll have 300, 400, 600 parking spaces that all have to be wired for chargers as these residents need to charge electric vehicles. If we don't, it's just something I'd like to be considered in this. We are not, it's, it's something that our code will have to address in the future. But I think you, it would behoove you to future-proof it now. And that's it. Not so many questions, just some things I'd like, I wanted to put out there. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Robin?
So we had discussed, uh, what Lynn had stated and Christine. Linda had also made some, had some concerns about the code. And I'm wondering if you would like to just add any more than what you had said about with Lynn?
Would you be able to repeat that question, please? I'm sorry.
So we'd had, uh, you had taken what Lynn had said, where her code concerns were, and you had addressed them. Linda also had some code concerns. I was wondering if you could also address her code concerns?
As I recall from my notes, Ms., uh, Ms. Knufinky, uh, mentioned the, that it did not comply with the commercial mix zoning. However, the only, the only item staff could find that did not comply with the commercial mix zoning was the density, which was changed from the time the application was made until tonight's hearing. That density was corrected and that is part of the conditions. I didn't note anywhere else that it did not comply with commercial mix zoning.
Thank you.
Other notes I had, uh, that Ms. Knufinky mentioned that it was not laid out appropriately or didn't meet that standard of, that criteria for approval. And the staff report, um, mentions how staff believes it does. According with the, the contextual nature of the plan. Also aesthetic appeal and transitions were not addressed, is the other note I had. However, the, as mentioned earlier, the, the requirements of the, the requirements for, uh, the content of the plans, as I mentioned before, the, uh, they are mentioned in the master development plan, each one of them, including those of sec, um, City Code Section 10 dash 3 dash 3.2B subsection D, which include walkable layout, context-sensitive streets, parking, connectivity, open space, resource integration, building and, and street relationship and livability. They are all mentioned to some degree in the plan, but, uh, perhaps only mentioned at this stage in a contextual way.
I think some of the difficulty here is when you're doing a concept and you're comparing it back to code, which is definitive, it can cause a lot of misunderstanding and confusion. This might want to, at some point, be discussed more to put some guidance in how do you create a concept that meets some of the more definitive aspects? Because that's, uh, some of my concerns fall along those lines, but I will get to those, as you well know, I always do. So first question is on your staff communications. On page two, analysis, council goals, objectives. And you go to financial sustainability, objective to revenue diversity. Your comment was the mixed-use development of the property will contribute to revenue diversity. Again, I think this is hard because as a concept, there is nothing here. In fact, it says fiscal impacts right underneath it, nothing available. So I tried to look at, well, this sounds like, well, I'm guessing that's what's going to happen because it seems like that's what's probably going to happen. But we actually don't have a fiscal impact for this. Again, we're looking at concepts versus something more definitive. That gives some confusion and misunderstanding. How can you say something when you have no fiscal impacts? Again, I think this stuff needs to be sorted out a little bit.
Well, given an initial response, and then we do have our economic development, um, director here who can give a more detailed response. But, uh, mixed-use development, uh, by its nature would allow some residential components and some commercial components. So that gives, uh, revenue diversity to the property by its own nature, as opposed to doing, uh, you know, a completely retail development or a completely residential development. That only speaks to the diversity of revenues, not to whether those are adequate or not.
Yes, I mean, it's interesting how you bring it up because no residential costs city money. So, you know, when you have the residents, that is taking money out of the city. But of course, the retail and that sort of stuff brings money into it. So just a comment.
Yeah.
Yes, please, if you'd like to add to that.
Hello, good evening. Cindy Perry, Economic Development Director. I think Mike, Mr. Sutherland, did a really nice job of summarizing the conceptual nature and the diversity of the proposal before us today. You are correct that we, we don't know exactly what, um, the revenue impact will be. But from an economic development perspective, this project brings the, the diversity that we need, the quality retail that we're looking for, that's going to support that additional residential. And I, I know that's a really roundabout way of answering your question. But, uh, please let me know if there's something else.
I don't think there's more that can be said, because again, it's a concept. I guess my point of this question is, is when you're looking at a concept, it's hard to say anything about financial sustainability. The idea is, yes, exactly what you're saying, but we honestly don't know. So that was it. I appreciate your comments very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so staff report on page seven, Decision Criteria Two. So in the decision criteria, we have the quality design. It specifically talks about the design of the buildings, visual interest, aesthetic appeal, a unique identity. Now, we have some verbiage around this and, and a very few illustrations. I'm not sure that requirement is being met. Now, you believe that you have sufficient guidance and direction for this criteria, just quoting from the report. I, I, where is your guidance for these, the design of the buildings, the visual interest, the aesthetic appeal, and unique identity, specific to criteria two?
So we're, uh, we're building as we go, so to speak, uh, from our, the Aspen Grove, um, application that you initially considered on July 25th, I believe it was. This very topic was brought up. And how do we, how do we, um, say that that criteria is met unless there is some visual form within the plans that we can implement later for, uh, for a site plan that comes in subsequently? What staff took from that initial master development plan is that some visual cues needed to be added to the plan, which was a condition of approval. And those visual cues would, uh, could be as simple as images that, uh, staff, I believe Planning Commission asked at that time whether staff could, that was enough to give us guidance as to the, the visual quality and the layout of the, of the future site plans that come in. So knowing that, we had the applicant add those into this plan. And we do feel that those illustra, those images and illustrations of, um, oh, the, the density of the, of the plan and the, and the visual aspects of the plan can be translated in the site plans and give us enough guidance to move forward.
Okay, I have a question for the applicant around that area, but I want to hold off until, don't worry, you'll have your turn. I appreciate that. On page seven, where you discuss the western boundary, will provide, hang on, let me get to my notes. Will provide functionality, visual interest, and unique identity of the western perimeter. So reading through the packet, um, you see where they talked about the path and different things that potentially could be provided at this boundary, but it doesn't really show functionality, visual interest, or unique identity. I, I'm curious, when you add those words, where you got that from?
Certainly. Uh, so the, the current code allows a, a setback on that boundary, and I'll, I'll have to look that up. But I can get you the, the setback requirement for, I think it's as little as five feet. And then the, uh, existing plan development, I believe, is similar to that, approximately five feet. This will allow some diversity, uh, of that buffer, which will have a landscape area that's, uh, that's wider than the code currently allows, wider than the plan development currently, currently allows. And also, it will allow a setback, that's, uh, building setback that's greater than what is currently allowed by the plan development or the, or the current code. And there are some, um, exceptions or, uh, oh, what does it call it? Allowances to encroach into that.
That'll be another question later.
Yeah. To us can provide visual interest in that, in that setback. So you're not looking at a, at a wall of development or anything like that, but something that, um, that is, undulates, uh, to some degree. So that's where we got the verbiage of visual interest that's provided. So that's where we got the verbiage of visual interest that's provided there. And the landscape, the landscape that will be provided, we think is, is more than adequate to provide a, 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 a good buffer between the park and the developed edge.
Okay, so the verbiage comes in the fact that they do have that 25-foot landscape, and they have several suggestions on what they might add into that, and that's what this means here?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one more for you. I think this is partly being asked, but answered in some ways and unanswered in others. So on page five, you state, if this MDP is approved, the city may accept site plan as applications for a new development. And I'm going back to, which is probably what you asked, send a little bit there, is what are your guidelines and decision criteria to make sure this is consistent? In this sense of, there is so much nebulousness in a concept.
So this is page five of the staff report?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And how did we arrive at our, I'm sorry to?
Where is it? On that page, you mean, or? So what, what is stated there is if this MDP is approved, the city may accept site plan applications for new development. So that's the comment in the, the staff plan. And the question is, what are your guidelines and decision criteria to make sure it is consistent considering the nebulousness of concepts?
Gotcha. Thank you for repeating that. So our decision criteria for, and I think, yep, thank you. Did you have that on your screen?
So per the code, all site plans have to meet the design criteria set forth in the code in Article 1013. So we would go to that. But in terms of the MDP, the, the uses, if you're talking about that, are already set by the corridor mix zoning.
No, it's the consistency. So you talk about trying to be consistent with the concept versus the site plan. So again, a concept is fairly nebulous. We've got lots of ideas. But how do you maintain that consistency of what you're given in the concept to make sure that is incorporated into the site plan? So it's a slightly different question. I think Mike gets it. You kind of nodded your head?
Yeah, I, when we're looking at site plans in relationship to this master development plan, there's some benefit to the, to the owner of the property to be a little bit more conceptual in nature because a lot more fits in to the, to the consistency with the master development plan, the more conceptual it is. So if a, if a development came in or a site plan came in that didn't fit the corners of this master development plan, they'd have to request an amendment. And that may come back to the Planning Commission for a decision. So what would those be? If, if they decided they wanted to try a residential standalone development in Block 1, that requires a, an amendment. If they wanted to still meet the corridor mixed zoning requirements for density or height, but it was over 65 feet, that would require an amendment. So they'd have to operate within the boundary of the MDP. If they wanted to change the circulation to some degree, that would require an amendment. So what you're looking at is, is very general in nature, a lot fits in there. But if anything is inconsistent, it comes back to you.
Thanks, Mike. I appreciate that. So now I have some questions for the applicant. I think you've probably answered one of them. This was in your project narrative included in our packet about comprehensive plan compliances. And in it, you discussed what makes Littleton a truly special place. Its historic downtown core, established neighborhoods, and the river that runs through it. Evergreen wants to build on that belief. The mixed uses will create a unique opportunity for people to gather, adding a sense of place. So you've talked a little bit about your idea of adding a sense of place. Could you talk about how you want to draw from the previous part of the sentence where it talks about a truly special place? It's historic downtown core, established neighborhoods, river runs through it. How do you want to build on that belief? What does that mean?
Yeah, sure. So, you know, the, the city is blessed with some already pretty unique environments. You know, Main Street, you know, and downtown Littleton is a very unique environment. Frankly, most suburban communities in Denver like pine for that. You know, they, they wish they had something that authentic. And so we very intentionally are, are not trying to recreate that. You know, if you want to create an authentic place, you don't do Disneyland and, or, you know, or the strip on Las Vegas where you've got the Xerox of Venice and the Xerox of New York, and it's this faux thing. So we're not, you know, trying to recreate Main Street Littleton. You know, we are also, you know, not trying to, you know, recreate like the Breck Brewery, which is its own very interesting, special place that's driven by a single user with a very robust integrated operation. You know, what we're trying to do with this project is to, you know, connect to our surrounding adjacencies and provide nodes of placemaking within both the residential components and the commercial components that are not oriented on the Main Street, but that are really plaza oriented. And, and again, it's, this is all in our heads and in our architects' heads and, you know, in various site plans that we frankly aren't able to present to you because we don't have the zoning yet. But that will come forth in the future site plans. But so to create, create those defended places, those intimate plaza environments that we frankly don't find in this, the rest of the shopping centers in Littleton, which are fairly traditional suburban strip malls, you know, with parking between the street and the building, and then you've got a building, and maybe you've got a 10-foot sidewalk where someone's kind of cramming in a patio, and that's, and that's it. And what you don't have is, you know, plaza nodes where you've got a mixture of hardscape and landscape and seating features, and you've got buildings defending those places. That, that's the deficiency that we see as experts in the retail environment, that we would like to bring, you know, to River Park. That's the type of environment that we plan to use this MDP as a springboard to create.
So it sounds like you're using some of the uniqueness of Littleton to show how you want to continue with that uniqueness in this community in its own way.
Correct.
Not trying to replicate, but create in its own way. Okay.
Yep.
That helps. I, I'd found that a little confusing as to what direction you were going there.
Yeah.
So that was very helpful. So decision criteria one, the staff had talked about three key location features, the Santa Fe mineral intersection, the light rail station, and the proximity to South Platte Park. So I wanted to ask about, and this came up quickly with Mike, about on sheet three, where you talked about you have the 25-foot landscape buffer, and then you have the 50-foot building buffer.
Correct.
With those exceptions in the encroachments. So in Block 4, you wanted to have, what was it? One, one type of habitable building. Could you kind of explain how you see, cause like you've created this, this lovely landscape feature and then this building setback, but now you're saying, well, not exactly, we want to do this habitable building. How do you see that to, I'm assuming you're doing this because you see this as benefiting the city and the community?
Absolutely.
Express Block 4, and then we'll talk about Block 3.
Yeah, so, so Block 4 is the kind of very narrow block that's at the south, that southwest quadrant. And, you know, for, on that particular block, you know, we needed flexibility because of the shallowness of the dimension between South Platte River Parkway, which was defined, you know, by the Quad Road, and that West Property Line, plus we have some fairly significant topography. If any of you have happened to trespass on the property, you would go over there and see that we've got a lot of topo to deal with. And so, you know, because of that, we needed some encroachment flexibility to, cause as I indicated previously, we're looking at a restaurant, entertainment venue there, and it's a, we're trying to fit 12 pounds of potatoes into a 10-pound sack. That's, we need a little bit of flexibility to encroach within that 25 to 50-foot area for one of those structures. Inhabitable structure just means it's, you know, a building that'll be occupied by a commercial business. And so it's just the tightness of, of that east-west dimension string that we were challenged with, that we needed some flexibility on for that particular block.
So you see it as commercial, not necessarily residential?
Oh, correct. Yeah, our plan is commercial for that, that Block 4.
So you're not really sure how much it might go into the, is it just really into the building setback? Not necessarily into the landscapes?
Yeah, the 25 feet is sacred. It's a DM, it's a DMZ. You cannot go into that area. It'll be entirely landscape, the trail network. And, you know, there will be some retaining walls in that area, again, because of the topography. But then it's in, outside the 25 feet, before you hit the 50, where there's that flexibility built in.
Okay. So in Block 3, you talk about two buildings within the 50-foot building setback, up to the 25-foot landscape setback. And you talk about a corner in and a corner out.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Boy, an illustration would have been really good to understand exactly what you meant by this. But again, from your previous statement, it will not be going into the landscape portion at all.
Correct. Yeah, nothing will encroach in the 25-foot area. And it, it's, on that block, we've got very weird geometry. The property lines are at triangular angles, not at straight lines. And so we built in the flexibility to encroach a building corner so we could angle buildings, you know, a corner into that setback area to get the right exposure, you know, to the mountain views and also to preserve view corridors through the area. And so it was a recommendation of our architects that we built some flexibility in there to, to, to angle a building edge into one of them. We didn't want to, you know, just give a blanket exemption, cause you could just throw a whole building up on 25 feet. The thought was you could cant a building in, in an interplay with the angled property lines and create some really unique environments. And that's part of the magic, to be honest with you, in the placemaking, is irregularity in building placements can create opportunities for place that you don't have in a very strict linear, like Main Street type environment. Because you get offsets where you can create little pockets of seating and landscaping that you wouldn't otherwise get if everything just racked up, you know, on a grid. And so that's one of the other opportunities we want to do in that particular block because it's going to be a residential block to create those nodes of place, which is really important in a higher density environment. Because you've got people who are, they don't have a backyard. You know, they don't have a, a private space like that. And so you need to create environments within the project where it's their safe place, where they go like to read a book, and like they go to this one little corner, and that's like their safe place when they're outside. And that's what we were trying to do with giving us some options. Cause otherwise, the natural tendency will be just to rack buildings up, right up against the setback line, and call it good.
So it, the way it was worded, it almost sounded like you were literally placing a building in the entire building setback area, you know?
Yeah, no.
And, and that was a little confusing.
That's definitely not the intention.
Okay.
If the commission thinks some clarification needs to be made in that, it would be fine with that. But, you know, the intention is you could, you know, you know, stick a building corner onto it, not the entire building.
Okay. So I'm looking at decision criteria two. I had some questions on different parts. So on your designed theme on sheet three, under design theme, it says, "A modern agrarian design theme is encouraged throughout the River Park to build on the agricultural heritage, the South Platte River corridor of Littleton. The architecture is intended to be a modern expression, while including hints of vernacular Colorado architecture styles of the Front Range and Rocky Mountain region." So that's one part. In your narrative, sorry, I'm looking for my notes. It says that, "Under aesthetics, River Park will be guided by an architectural design aesthetic called 'modern agrarian.'" And then you're going to have the Architectural Control Committee, which was previously mentioned. This is also brought up on sheet seven. So my question is concerning the verbiage of encouraged, guided, and intended leaves it open to, well, it's encouraged, but maybe not. Maybe you could speak to that. I mean, encouraged is not, okay, you need to flow within this modern agrarianism. We're encouraging it.
Yeah.
We're guiding it, but?
Yeah. Yeah, we, we've done a lot of this architectural theming in shopping center contexts. And, you know, it is admittedly a challenge because you get specifically commercial users who have a brand, who have an identity that is, it's their name and it's their logo, but is also the architectural expression of their structure. And so it is admittedly a challenge to work with end users who you come and say, hey, we want, you know, this modern agricultural themed building, and they say, here's our prototype, you know, good luck, you know, getting our committee to change that. And so what we end up doing is, you know, working with our architects and saying, hey, listen, here's the, here are some renderings, some of buildings that we think are an expression of this modern agrarian. Here's your prototype. How can we reconcile these? And if, if it's done right, if it's done thoughtfully, you know, with staff and with an architectural control committee, you know, that you'll be able to, to blend those together and get them to incorporate, you know, colors, materials, and architectural features that, you know, speak to that environment. You're never going to get, you know, I don't know, I don't know what to use, you know, some sort of, you know, sit-down restaurant, a, you know, View House restaurant, for example. I'll, I'll refer better word, the one on I-25 with the big patios. You're not going to get them to look like a barn. Like, you know, that, you know, cause a, a barn architecture is limiting in how you, how you, how you can implement it. And so how do you have something like that, like a destination restaurant, incorporate architectural cues from that type of environment in their building? And so I guess the, the bottom line is, that's why, you know, it, it would be much easier, if this was an entirely residential project, you could be very more dictatorial with your architecture because it's more flexible. When you're introducing architectural standards in a, in a commercial environment with commercial real estate committees and commercial branding, you have to be very sensitive about how you do that in a way that allows that brand to express themselves, their customer, while also incorporating the, the architectural themes. And so that's why it is admittedly soft, but it is because of the commercial orientation of the real estate and us just recognizing after doing this for nearly 50 years that there's limits to how much we can dictate our end users' architecture and that we need to guide them towards a certain direction.
So if someone wants to come in with something that does not fit this modern agrarian and will not compromise?
If they won't compromise, they're not coming. So they will absolutely have to compromise. They will have to go through both a private architectural committee and a, you know, a city staff review that's going to have to, you know, they have a fiduciary to you all to enforce this MDP. So they can't just, we can't just abdicate the throne and, oh, just whatever you want. And we have turned down end users in other projects who have refused to compromise. So it's, sorry, then you are not coming to this project. But if there's an end user who has an architect who's at the table, who is willing to say, okay, well then, what type of materials are in an agricultural setting? Let's look at barn woods, let's look at stone, let's look at, you know, what type of, you know, roof lines are we looking at? Okay, well, let's, you know, if you can't make your entire roof like a barn, you know, is there an element that we can create some barn architecture or themes? And that's, you know, what we can, you know, what we can do. And if users are willing to engage in that process, generally you come up with some pretty unique architecture. And I'm confident that, given our great relationship with staff, we'll be able to do that here.
Okay, that sounds good. Also in the project narrative, which is- Also, in the project narrative, which is also on, on sheet seven, where we talked about being guided, it says that "The architectural design aesthetic called modern agrarian, which builds on the building topography and materials found in historic downtown Littleton and along the adjacent South Platte River corridor." So when I, I think of, when I look at from things that are in downtown Littleton, all along that Platte River corridor, there is a tremendous amount of variety.
Yeah, there is, which is amazing.
How, how you draw that in to stay within the, to me, it almost seems like you're opening a door here to be a little wider from the modern agrarian. That's just my concern is, how far will you step away from that if you are also incorporating what you see along the South Platte River corridor?
Yeah. What, what we will do, which we have done in other projects, is we will, we're going to work with our planners to create what we call a vision book. And we will, that vision book is an inspiration manual essentially to hand to the architects of all the end users. And it'll have photographs of frankly, the cherry picked buildings that we think express this architectural style. And those photographs will come from those corridors. They will come from the, you know, South Platte corridor. It'll come from, you know, Old Town Littleton and say, hey, listen, we don't want any Xerox copies of these buildings. But these, this is the variety that we, that we think expresses this modern agrarian. And it's, and it comes from this community. So, and, and very intentionally, we want it to, you know, be a variety. We don't want every building looking like a barn. You know, we don't want every building, you know, looking like, you know, the, the theater in Old Town Littleton. You know, that, that becomes, then you look like Scottsdale where everything looks like the same because they all have the very strict design standard. We don't want to design people's buildings for them. We want to let their architects express their brand and their building in a way that is harmoni- harmonizes with this corridor. But my hope is if we provide this vision book to the end users, that when you come to River Park, you are going to see, you know, a variety of roof lines, a variety of materials, but it all fits together. It all feels like it belongs. And that's really the goal. And that's how you create authenticity, is diversity yet harmony through a, a, a feeling. I mean, it's like an architectural expression. It's hard to, because it's art, it's artistic ultimately at its core.
Right. When you're looking at something, you don't go, oh, yeah, yeah, what the hell?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
May I add to that response?
Of course you can.
Thank you. A little city code has some fairly robust design requirements in the commercial district, along with material requirements and contextual requirements. So those would all have to be met in the context of the agrarian, uh, modern agrarian theme. So that's how staff would approach it, is first it needs to meet the code. And then it also needs to fit into this agrarian concept with the approval of the, the Design Control Committee or the Architectural Review Committee.
Correct, yeah.
Yes, I appreciate that. The city does have some very strong requirements. And that's why I've been angling at the agr- the modern agrarian is just decided how that was being incorporated in. So thanks, Mike. I appreciate that. I didn't have another question, but you have already answered that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. We're a little more than two hours in. It's almost break time. But if, if it's okay with everybody here, we'll just go through the rest of the questions and comments and then take a break and then come back and deliberate on this. So Commissioner Alman?
I think there are a couple of questions left to ask, but I'm not sure. No, kidding. I do have a few questions. Unfortunately, I, I was jotting them down as I reviewed and then later, fortunately and unfortunately, then tonight I take lots of notes and write questions. So I'd rather than be more grouped together, so I'll try my best to group these like kind. So the first one is to do, just on the, the quad road access issue, a few questions. One, from what are my understanding is of when I saw the plan is there, there's an existing curb cut on Santa Fe that you will utilize for the, what is that, Nichols? And then there's an existing, two existing curb cuts on Mineral, correct? And are those then the only, those will be the access points that are shown on the maps that we're looking at? There won't be additional curb cuts or access to the property? Is that correct?
Are you talking about for the quad road or for the development?
Either and.
So the quad road will access Santa Fe at Nichols, a new, a new location. It's not where an existing driveway is. The existing driveway that's out there will be abandoned. I mean, it'll be closed off, won't be existing anymore. And then there'll be one point on Mineral at Platte River Parkway where the quad road comes out. There won't be any other access to Mineral or Santa Fe other than those two points for this development in the quad road. And then with on, along the quad road, we've worked with the developer to locate access points with controlled movements that we think will work best for both serving people gaining and out of their development, but also minimize impact to the regional traffic that's going to be using the quad road. So there's essentially, for each block, there's one access point along the quad road, one on each side. So for example, along Nichols, between Santa Fe and Platte River Parkway, there's one to access that northeast quad, and there's one access for that southeast quad. And then same as you go up on the Platte River Parkway, between Mineral and Nichols, there'll be one on the east side of the road to access, again, that northeast quadrant, and then one on the west side of the road to access the residential block three that he was talking about.
Okay.
Yeah, and just to orient you, on the MDP, on the aerial underlay, you can actually see the current driveway in white. It, it goes right through block two. So the Nichols will be further north from that existing driveway that serves the houses. Just to, if you're ever out there on the site, help orient you.
Okay, so the, the existing curb cut on Santa Fe then, is that what you're saying would be abandoned? And then it would be moved then to the north?
Correct.
To have that access?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Another reason I'm asking this because, well, there are a few reasons. But one is, you know, there's been, we, we've heard about, we know about Toll Brothers development coming in south of this. And then you reference both in your reports, as did staff. And, you know, tonight, speaking that, you've worked with Toll Brothers, Toll Brothers, not Trow, Toll Brothers, and coordinated with them. And then it, it seems that, instead of making a statement, let me ask, how, how is the coordination with the actual access to both of those sites being handled between the two developments? So will there be more curb cuts on Santa Fe? No? Okay, okay.
No, we, staff has been...
I don't want to get too far ahead there, but...
Staff has been working with CDOT for the past four years to identify where the access points are allowed along Santa Fe for these developments. So it's, it's been reduced to the bare minimum, which makes sense. You don't want your accesses along the major roadways. You want them on the side roads. So that's how we've oriented them. You also want them to be safe. There'll be a signalized intersection, Nichols, and there'll be one more to the south at what we're calling Phillips, which if you know where the bridge is over Dad Clark Gulch, it'll be just north of that. If you, if you know where the access is to the Coventry Farms, right there, it'll be right across from there.
Oh, okay.
And that'll be it. Uh, once the Equine Center eventually redevelops, that access will go away as well. But it'll stay there as long as the Equine Center is, is functioning there.
All right. And I'm asking that too because, you know, that's an issue that we hear a lot as well as the, that Santa Fe is dangerous, but also adding additional access onto Santa Fe and the, you know, complications that come with that. So I just wanted to clarify and, and see what the plan was for that. Okay. And I have other questions about that relationship in a moment, but I want to ask just a couple more about the access. Let me see. Hang on, I'm looking at my nose. Okay. Elevation. Okay, I guess that's it on, on the access points. But then moving on, in, when we had Aspen Grove in last, for the last meeting, you know, MDP meeting, there was a lot of discussion about heights of the buildings. And that you've come back then and offered to lower your, that, that elevation down to, what'd you say, 65 feet versus 80? It said, I think I read in your reporter, staff report, that, that the elevation from Santa Fe on, to the property, that Santa Fe is higher than this side. Is that true across the board? Is that, is that not true? Is that?
It depends on where you're at. Because it, you know, Santa Fe and Mineral, the intersection is lower. You know, our property sits higher.
Right.
But then Santa Fe climbs back up and then transitions to, to grade. You know, the, the blessing that we have as it relates to our neighbors to the east is that we sit significantly below the South Park neighborhood. And so, that helps with some of these view concerns, you know, for us.
Okay. And that's the reason I'm asking this question because, you know, that, that's a huge point of contention, or it has been, with Aspen Grove is the height. And then knowing that some of their taller structures, there was a drop off. I think it's at 100 feet in elevation from Santa Fe down to where they're actually building one of the commercial buildings that would be taller. So in effect, you know, it would be, it wouldn't be as high, okay? So I'm asking that question also for, just to ascertain for citizens and for us that, you know, visually what that might do
Yeah, sure.
residents on the eastern side, Santa Fe.
You know, there's a, there's a conceptual massing graphic that was actually in the staff report. I, I've got it on my screen. It's bigger.
Right.
If you want to flip it on, I'm sure if I see people, yeah, I can. This is a shot, you know, taken from the South Park neighborhood. You know, the, and I apologize, I'm colorblind. But the, the taller buildings on the left, the, the red-orange buildings and the blue-green buildings in the back, those are at the maximum 65 foot height that we have limited ourselves to. So, you know, because of that topographic difference between South Park and our property, even at that maximum height of 65 feet, you know, you can very easily see over them to the, the mountains, frankly, even the foothills of the mountains. So we, you know, we think that, you know, from a visual standpoint, that, you know, we will have a minimal impact upon that neighborhood's western views.
Okay, good. Thank you. I think I did have another question on the quad, but I'll find it. Aaron, I know you're waiting for it. With bated breath over there. Okay, just a couple more questions. On, you know, the Toll Brothers development, we have not, we haven't seen it. We haven't really looked at it. We kind of know that it's out there, right? I, I have to think about that development as well because, one, because what, what's the relationship between the two? And then what are the, you know, complementary aspects of those two developments? And it sounds like Toll Brothers is all residential from what we know. I'm just assuming from the staff report, and I don't want to get ahead. But the reason I'm bringing that up is because in your conceptual plan, you're talking about adding some residential, and yet, you know, we've got residential coming on in Aspen Grove. We've got residential coming in south. And so, as, one, I guess, do you view your proposed project, when you design it, as complementary to what's happening down there? Is it going to be a duplication? Is it, are targeting, going to be targeting different markets? And maybe that's outside the scope of approving a conceptual plan, but I'm, I can't help but think about...
I think it is, but I'm happy to answer it anyways.
Okay, okay.
Toll Brothers is a home builder. It's, you know, I don't, have not seen all their plans or know their applications. But from what I understand and talking to them is the predominance of their acreage will be for sale residential. They're, they're a for sale home builder. And I think the, my guess is it'll probably be a variety of densities of homes because their current zoning, which they're operating under the old PD, allows for a variety of densities. And we think that's great. You know, we would love for there to be more residential proximate. That's also really pedestrian friendly, you know, because of Santa Fe and Mineral. We, it's, it's, there are obstacles to cross is, and so it'll be great to have some homes to the south. I don't, I don't know what their plans are or are not for commercial. I do know that their PD does allow some commercial, but I don't know what their plans are in that regard. But, you know, our, you know, we, we believe that, you know, our project will be complementary not only to Toll Brothers, but also to Aspen Grove. You know, Aspen Grove as it is today is primarily a, it's a pretty power center. You know, it's a lot of, you know, junior anchor, larger format boxes. And we're not proposing a bunch of, you know, anchor boxes on our property. All be smaller format. The residential that we do have will be higher density, oriented towards the light rail station. And, you know, I think Toll Brothers, I believe as a home builder, will probably be doing a lower density product. So we think, you know, we're going to be complementary to both of our neighbors, north and south.
And it just so happens we're, you know, looking at all three developments sequentially, and they're all coming in at once. And then so it's like, you know, they're all adjacent to each other. And, you know, in a lot of the work that we've been doing, trying to think about what, what is Littleton going to look like? And what do we want it to look like? And then we have these three very major developments, one that's already existing to be upgraded, but then two new ones, you know, that this is going to make a huge impact on the face of our city. So that's the basis for my questions around that. It's like, you know, is there going to be some cohesiveness and coordination among?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're coordinating
what's going on?
monthly with Toll Brothers from an engineering perspective because our horizontal improvements and utilities all integrate. And the good news is, is you've got one set of city staff handling all this. And we regularly get feedback from staff that, hey, we met with Toll Brothers, we met with Aspen Grove, and, you know, here's something you guys need to incorporate. You know, the cycle track conversation was had simultaneously with us and Toll Brothers as we were informed by, you know, Aaron and the, and their team about this regional, you know, cycle way that they wanted to start creating. And that was, you know, news to both of us, and it was immediately integrated across both projects. You know, staff wasn't trying to, you know, you know, they were just upfront and transparent from day, you know, right from the outset. So I think that's, you know, that's the role of staff, is to make sure that there's consistency because all three projects have separate engineers, separate architects, separate visions. And their job is to create consistency on behalf of the city. And I think they're doing a pretty damn good job at it.
Okay. On the other hand, we don't want everything to look alike either.
Correct.
But, you know, to have some kind of cohesion there
Absolutely.
a wonderful thing. Okay, I, I found my question for Aaron. And it, it also, it's for both of you in that the quad road, in the reports, staff and otherwise, the timing's not clear in terms of when that's going to be constructed. I read, starting in early 2023. But I, I want to ask if that's true. And secondly, how does that relate and to, to your start of construction on, on your corner? Because both, both for infrastructure, because that's what you'll be doing, correct?
Yeah.
And then you'll be bringing in tenants or different users of the property, just in terms of timing? Because some, we also had a question or some concerns with citizens about, you know, we're going to have all this development coming in, Santa Fe's not going to be done, that improvement's not going to be made, you know? So...
Sure, I can start with the timing for the quad road.
Okay.
Quad road's under design. It'll be completed by summer of next year. We expect to start construction late summer, early fall of '23 and have it wrapped up early in '25. There's a lot that the developers need to do, especially Evergreen, before we can have the quad road built, such as grading the site, putting in any underground utilities because we don't want to build a quad road and then have them come in and do water lines and gas lines and stuff to tear up a brand new road. So all of that has to be, the underground infrastructure needs to be in place first. But frankly, we've been talking for three years now about this and planning it out. So we're pretty comfortable about the timing and how well it's all going to work. Yeah, there's going to be some conditions where we need some temporary construction, roadways and stuff to make sure that Evergreen can be constructing their buildings while we're constructing the roadway and stuff. But that'll be all part of the phasing and coordination of the construction.
Yeah, from the private side, you know, we, we can't open a single building until the quad road's done because it is our access. So whether we like it or not, the quad road is going first. No pressure on Aaron. No pressure on Aaron, because we're going to be hot on his heels. But it is our goal to have our private construction to be running in parallel with the Quad Road. It's a pretty protracted construction timeframe. You know, the higher density, like residential, will probably need to start first because it has the longest construction lead time. But it would be our goal that in 2025, when the Quad Road opens, we're opening our first phases. But there's a lot of sequencing on the utilities especially that we're working through right now. You know, one of the prerequisites, obviously, for constructing the Quad Road is that we have to dedicate the right-of-way. Because right now, the city and CDOT don't own it, you know, we own that land. And so we're working with them on our subdivision plat and subdivision improvement agreement that outline who does what, who's paying for what, when does it happen? And it's a very long matrix of things that have to be coordinated that we've been working on for quite some time with the city staff.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I've got.
Okay, last, last but not least here. Okay, I have questions for staff, and then I'll come back to you, Tyler. First, I, you know, I think this is probably for Aaron. The circulation plan shows the Nichols Road that ends at Santa Fe with sidewalks on both sides. And I'm wondering, the sidewalk's just dead-end there since there's no pedestrian access along Santa Fe? And then on the other end of Nichols, on the other side of the roundabout, there's a roundabout leg that extends to the west that doesn't have, doesn't seem to have any access points off, and it kind of looks like it's aimed to go across the river and across the park. Can you comment on those?
Sure. So first of all, Nichols at the Santa Fe end. What you'll notice about what we do with the sidewalk is, you know, we have the main drag that, you know, Tyler's talked about, along Flat River Parkway, that'll be along the east side, which will have the cycle track and the separate pedestrian walkway. As it comes around the two corners to head down Nichols, it pairs down and gets to be a smaller and smaller sidewalk. And it's basically, its intent is, a lot of people like to just go out and walk sometimes. So we're giving them area where they can just walk and meander around without actually being along Santa Fe, which we don't feel is a safe environment for them. So that's kind of why that sidewalk is on both sides of Nichols, and it has a crossing at the Santa Fe intersection to get across. The west leg of the roundabout heads directly into Evergreen's development. So we're going to only build it as what we need to for the Quad Road, and then allow them to do what they want and need with it for their internal circulation between Block Four and Block Three, basically. So it's going to serve both of those areas. We're just stubbing it out, and then they'll pick it up, and they'll have probably, it'll probably be a T-intersection, I imagine, but they could do something else with it. Again, we'll see when the site plan comes in, I'll get to review it and make sure I agree with how they're orienting traffic and controlling it. But that's what that stubs for, is to access the residential to the north of there, and then whatever commercial they put into the south.
Okay, so it's not intended to bridge across the river?
No. South suburban would never allow that to happen.
And I guess, you know, hold that thought when you come up. I just kind of question whether or not that could just go away in turn, you know, in terms of a fourth leg, and you have a three-legged roundabout. But that's just a sort of an open question. Also, I noticed in the MDP, there's no mention of a cycle track. And it was in the presentation, but it's not on the MDP. And the MDP, I think, calls it a shared-use path. Is that the same thing?
That was a marketing term Aaron used to seduce me into it, for the record.
Okay. But it's the same as the shared-use path?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Let's see. I had a lot of questions, but my fellow commissioners, I think, asked them and answered them, so I cut it down to just a few. There was a question on sheet four of the MDP, which, and I think it's a typo, under development data, residential density, it says fifty-two dwelling units maximum. And I believe that's fifty-two DUs per acre? Or is it fifty-two site-wide?
Fifty-two dwelling units per acre.
Okay, so that needs to be corrected.
Yeah.
All right.
Development's misspelled too.
Yeah, and development spelling.
Development's misspelled too.
Yeah. And I noticed a few typographic and perhaps just errors. I know you picked up the two conditions on the height restriction, so that's good. I did have a question about gross floor GFA. I know it's mentioned in the ULUC, but I don't think we have requirements around it for commercial. And I think it's, so there's nothing in the MDP that sets a maximum GFA or a minimum GFA for commercial uses in the mixed-use category or the commercial-use category. Should we be adding that as a future amendment to the ULUC? Because it seems like, you know, that's the definition of density for commercial use. We just, we're just talking DUs per acre right now.
Right. So the density for commercial developments under the commercial mix zoning districts would be controlled by the open space required for each site and the setbacks, and the height requirements? And then the big one's the parking.
It's kind of backing into it.
It backs into it, correct.
So I guess I don't see a downside to specifying that, but it's not in the code right now. So that's my question and concern, not holding the developer to it because it's not in the code, but, okay. Let's see, I think just comment on the way that the development data is presented on the same sheet. It just seems like mixed use and commercial should be kind of together and residential separate because the mixed use and commercial have very similar, I know the open space requirement's different, but everything else is the same, heights, density, you know? It's a comment, it's more just for legibility and ease of reading. I find myself kind of going back and forth with the code on that one. I had a sort of objection to one of the statements in the narrative that, well, actually, I guess it was in the narrative of this one, where it talks about, in the design theme, it says the mixture of uses within each block will be dictated by market conditions. And I think dictated is the wrong word there, maybe informed, or, you know? It's hard to predict what the market dictates, and it's hard for us to understand that, too. And so if I follow that line of thinking, I'm thinking that, you know, they're going to do whatever the market decides they should do, or whatever they think the market decides. So I just have a little problem with the way that's worded. I think it could be worded, it's more informed, it obviously follows, you know, follows market conditions, consistent with, you know, something along those lines. I don't know if there's any reason for putting the word dictated in there.
So I can let the applicant speak to that, but that's one of his favorite expressions. And only Mr. Carlson knows what the market dictates.
Well, I have a flair for the dramatic, Chairman. But no, I think informed probably is a better word. I think what we wanted to make sure the narrative conveyed was that, you know, reality, the realities of, you know, tenant requirements, you know, the realities of, you know, operations, you know, like, no one likes a loading dock, but you got to have a loading dock if you want to have certain types of retail. You know, no one likes a trash area or a dumpster, but you have to have some of those things. So I think what we wanted is to, was to do, and the reason why we put that general statement in there about market conditions, is so that this is not a Pollyanna MDP that will never get built. You know, we're planning an MDP that we think will lead to actual transactions and actual construction. But you're right, you know, if it's just market conditions, or if it's just dictated by what the raw market wants, you know, we won't be able to achieve some of the other aims of the MDP with its placemaking and things of that nature. And so I think informed probably is a better word, and you can, I retract my flamboyance on exaggeration.
While you're up there, I've got a couple other questions, Tyler. So one is on the Architectural Control Committee. And I know that it's the developer that's developing and a group of folks that will be reviewing the design of this, and it feels a little bit to me like the fox watching the fennel house. But I know it's normally done in other developments.
It is, yeah.
Like this. Could you talk to a little bit how you select folks that are on that design, Architectural Control?
Sure, and it's varied. You know, the first imitation goes to city staff, and if they want to play a role in that committee. We have an ACC on a project up in Wheat Ridge where staff actually said, no, we do not want to be part of this. We want to, you know, have a, you know, a level of independence, you know, from this group that's advising us, and we feel it's like too much mingling of church and state to have us on the committee. But generally, what we're looking for are, you know, design professionals who live in the community, who have a vested interest in what goes on there. And that committee is, you know, administratively run, you know, by us, by our development manager. But, you know, we don't put people on that committee, you know? It's a volunteer effort, so it has to be someone who has a passion for the neighborhood and for their craft. And, you know, we do try to, you know, compensate them on like a per diem kind of thing, but we're asking people to sacrifice their time. And so you tend to get people who are very much caring about the community. And so if you guys have recommendations, we'd love to hear them, because it is our intention to try to find a group of individuals who come from a variety of, you know, planning or architectural engineering backgrounds, who can, again, make some recommendations. And then what we do is, you know, before something gets submitted for an actual submittal, that they go to the city for pre-op, and they go to the ACC for design guidance. And it depends really upon the city's perspective. Do they want us to have the ACC see it first, or they want to see it concurrent or afterwards? And that's some of the details that we'll work on with staff. Because the goal is for it to be an asset and help kind of prescreen. And it's, that's been exactly what it's been on other projects. Because as the ACC learns what makes staff happy and what makes staff sad, they can start to tell people, no, yeah, don't try that, the last guy got his head chopped off. So let's, you know, let's try to corral the thing a little bit better. And it's especially helpful on the architectural side, where there is, it's more subjective. So.
Okay. Well, I'm glad you said that there are design professionals from the local community, they're invited to participate.
Absolutely, yeah.
I think that's very important, that it's not just the developer reviewing sort of their own.
I mean, that would be really fun, but.
And another sort of thief of mine is the term, it's another terminology thing, the ACC is Control Committee, and I see Gary Ellerman over there that's done, you know, worked with on this type of stuff before. But like, design review, I think, is more of the function.
Correct, yeah.
Than trying to control something.
Correct.
That's just, again, my own thing. The last one I have for you, Tyler, is the phasing and timing plan is very confusing to me. It seems to just address the timing of the infrastructure and not the development itself.
Correct.
So I read it as, you know, the Quad Road is Phase One, the utilities. Phase Two seems to be the extension of the parkway to the south border, and Phase Three is kind of everything else. When would the development happen, and which blocks would go first in the phasing? Is that part of the plan now?
Yeah, and this is unfortunately where some of the market condition stuff comes in there. There's what we're hoping to do, and then we will see what reality brings. I mean, our hope is to actually develop this all in one phase, that we get approved tonight, you know, we can hit the street tomorrow. Actually, I'm going to be in San Diego at the Shopping Center Convention and start talking about this project, and that, you know, we'll be launching into, you know, a host of site plans, you know, next year. I mean, our dream scenario, heavens knows, we've already owned it for five years, would be to get going right away. You know, thirty-three acres is a large site. I know for the city of Littleton, it's not a large site from a development perspective, especially when it gets chopped up and all these different small components. So it's our hope that we could develop it all in one shot, and that we could have, you know, everything being opened in, you know, 2025, 2026, you know, kind of those immediate years following the Quad Road. But we're also in a highly uncertain economic environment. Lord knows, we all read the paper every day, and, you know, it's frankly getting worse, not better. And so that's why we were more cautious in our time projections, and we did indicate potential for phasing, because if the world does go to hell in a handbasket, and, you know, we go through some other COVID crisis, you know, that could impact our ability to attract restaurants, you know, who, you know, are highly sensitive to those type of environments. Or if, you know, we have a, you know, significant unemployment issue, and all of a sudden that shuts the spigots off for residential demand, you know, where maybe we're going to move forward to commercial and the residential lags. I mean, there's, this is the unknowns, we don't know. So we were, I think, intentionally trying to be a little broad. To be honest with you, this is the first time in a zoning document I've ever had to put phasing with actual timeframes in it. It's fairly unusual. So we did the best we could, really tied to the specifics of the infrastructure, which are more defined, because of the city's, you know, funding that's secured for the Quad Road, that we've got more definition on, and then the rest of it will be as quickly as frankly we can.
Okay. Well, thank you. The rest of the questions I have are for staff.
Thank you.
Process, thank you. So this is a process question. The current zoning of the site is still PDC, PDR. And does the application for an MDP or the approval of an MDP automatically change the zoning, or is there a separate process associated with that?
So the property is zoned corridor-mixed with a PLO overlay? So that PLO does refer back to the Santa Fe Park planned development? So what is before you this evening is the MDP, again, to go to the existing zoning, which is corridor-mixed?
And that automatically drops the PLO designation?
Correct.
Okay, I guess that was more accurate.
And there's no zoning map amendment that's required.
Okay. Okay, thanks. So my impression here is, you know, one of the blocks, and I'm thinking the other being developed in phases, one of the blocks is ten acres plus or minus, and our MDP requirement addresses specifically ten-acre parcels and larger. What would be the pros and cons of, as a condition, requiring a detailed MDP for the first phase of development? Whatever that might be.
Pros and cons?
Yeah. In terms of process and timing?
Right. So that would add, so I guess, in terms of, without calling it a pro or a con, that would add a process step into the development of the property. And that would, that type of condition would require that the development of each block come back to Planning Commission.
Development of each block or development of each phase?
Beg your pardon?
Development of each block or each phase? If it's all done in one phase, it would be one.
The way the applicant has described the phases, that that initial phase would just be infrastructure. So you'd probably be talking about the development of each block, I would guess. Yeah, just adding that process step, you know, sending it to Planning Commission for each time would be the effect of such a condition.
Okay, so that would add a public hearing for each block?
Well, yeah, you could probably put it in terms of each block. You know, the, I think the development of the new code was to try and have developments that meet our code requirements done administratively. So I would say that that would be a little bit of an unusual step in terms of the direction of this new city code that's been adopted to bring these things back to a public hearing.
Chair, if I can add to that?
Sure.
In looking at, obviously, the applicant choosing to do a conceptual MDP at this point rather than a detailed one, that is the first step, right? And then all of your site development plans will come after that. So arguably, it would exceed the authority of this commission to add such a condition requiring yet another MDP if this one is approved.
Hmm, yeah, we're all trying to figure out, you know, Yeah, we're all trying to figure out, you know, what the MDP looks like, and my experience, a conceptual plan comes before a detailed plan, and a site development plan comes after a more detailed, you know, sort of master plan, it seems like a logical process that you could interject a detailed, uh, as a condition, I think there's actually a fourth criteria here, um, that's in the ULUC for that type of additional requirement, I'm just, like I said, you know, this is such a high-level conceptual plan, I, as a commissioner, would like to see more detail, um, and if we approve this tonight, I won't, we won't see it, right, it goes administratively through approvals, I guess I'm concerned about that, um, so that's why I was kind of asking, you know, what, um, you know, what are the issues that, I mean, if there's a legal concern that we cannot do that, that's one thing, if there's a timing issue that's going to slow the development down and maybe not meet the milestones necessary to get the Quad Road built, that's another issue, but.
So, the details will come during that site plan phase, and that's how the land use code was set up, again, that we have this conceptual or the MDP, and then the more specifics are brought down, the details for the site plan, now that site plan is still available to the public, it's on the development activity list, anyone can review it, um, we also have it in there if somebody feels like it should go to planning commission for review, that is a possibility, the applicant can request that planning commission review it, I can request that planning commission review it, but the way we set up that land use code is the details are in the site plan, and the site plan is an administrative level.
Okay, okay, well, um, that's all the questions I had, I know that last one was kind of a doozy, but, um, I think we probably could take a five or ten-minute break here and come back, is everybody okay with that, I know I've been sitting here for a while, so, um, why don't we come back at, uh, is, uh, ten minutes enough, nine-twenty-five? Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. I think the next step here is we've heard, we've had questions from the Planning Commission. We have an opportunity now for the developer to address any other rebuttals to our questions, concerns, and also to public comment.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Carolyn White for the applicant, and I might call it responses, maybe, instead of rebuttals. We have just a couple of brief things I wanted to make sure to clarify for the record. I'm going to mention a few things, and then Mr. Carlson's going to come back to the podium and address a couple of issues as well. I think maybe a number of the public comments and the questions from the Commission tonight really all kind of relate to the fact that you have this sort of two-path process now. You have the concept MDP and you have the detailed MDP, and you choose one or the other, but yet in the code they're still located in the same section and they have the same criteria, and they have the same list of things that have to be included. And the question is just for a detailed one, do you have more detail about those things compared to for a concept one? And so really hear and understand those questions, and maybe a little bit of confusion about what should be in a detailed one that wouldn't be in a concept one, or how much detail do you have to put and be valid as a concept, you know, but not go the next step to detailed. So really understand and hear where you all and where the public is coming from on that. In particular, it came to light for me in two areas. One is the question about parking, which one of the comments was, well, why aren't you physically showing, like, why aren't you depicting on the plan where the parking is going to be rather than just stating what the requirement is, namely that it has to be shielded and, you know, located in a certain way? And the answer is because we don't have the site plan yet. We don't know where the parking's going to be. We don't know how much parking we need because we don't know what the uses are, and you can't really depict it on the MDP. All you can do is incorporate it into the MDP, the requirement that it comply with the CM standards and otherwise meet all the code requirements. And so that's what that particular one does. And another one was some questions about density, and, Mr. Chairman, you asked about, well, gosh, why isn't there a floor area ratio or a gross floor area or something? And the answer was, well, we've sort of addressed density a different way. We've said you have X setbacks and you have Y height requirements, and you have a certain amount of open space, and you have a certain amount of parking, and whatever's left over is how much density you can have for the non-residential areas. And the way I read that particular code requirement is it's sort of a menu list of different ways to express density, and depending on whether you're in concept or detailed, you might go further. You might have two different ways to explain it if you're going detailed, but you really only need one. And in this case, we have that former one, which is we've defined the box rather than just stating an express number. So I hope that maybe addresses that point as it comes from the developer's perspective of how we were interpreting these code requirements and also working with staff to submit what I believe is maybe the second concept MDP that has been reviewed under the ULUC and sort of all flying this plane together as we're building it. The other item I wanted to address was something that came up in public comment that wasn't addressed with specificity in the Q and A, and that was the comment and the handout from one of the members of the public. I apologize, I didn't write the name down fast enough, referencing a website called the Colorado Wetland Information Center, which appears to depict that there are wetlands on the property. And I just wanted to mention for the record that we have consulted that website, and it's a CSU website, CSU-maintained and monitored website. And it expressly says on the website that it is an approximate estimation of where wetlands are likely to be and is not to be used for regulatory purposes and does not depict jurisdictional wetlands. And so I just want to make sure that that's really clear in the record, and hopefully that explains that issue just a little bit. Just a couple more quick points. The quad road, there's been a lot of discussion about the quad road. I'm not sure it came across clearly, but, you know, if this road were being designed solely to accommodate the net new traffic added to the roadways by this development, it could be done, that could be done with a far less robust road design and one which takes up far less, you know, real estate within the development and doesn't, you know, cut it in quarters the way it does. The reason the quad road is designed the way it is is to not only accommodate the traffic from the development, but also to collaborate with the city and try to address some regional traffic issues that already exist. And so, you know, this MDP depicts the quad road in part because collectively the city and the developer have concluded that that is the best way to address collectively both the traffic demands of this project and the existing traffic needs for the city. Could we get away with a much smaller road with fewer, yeah, probably, but that's not what would be consistent with your overall transportation plan and needs in this vicinity. Talked about density. And then last, that legal point that came up at the end. I think the city attorney already addressed it, but just for the record, I want to state on behalf of the developer that the way I read the code is also that it would not be within the authority of the Planning Commission to oppose a requirement for another MDP on the developer when you read Section 10-9-5.7 and the process of when an MDP is required. When you make that election conceptual or detailed, when you choose detailed, it's because you are wanting all or part of the MDP to substitute for the next step, the site plan. So you can either do concept MDP followed by individual site plans, which are reviewed administratively, or you can do detailed MDP and no subsequent site plans, or at least no subsequent site plans for the parts that were addressed in the MDP. But it doesn't give the authority to require concept MDP and then detailed MDP and then site plan. That's just not what the code says. So thanks for giving me the opportunity to address that on the record. I want to let Tyler come up and just make a few concluding remarks about the overall project. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
I'll make this brief. I really just want to say thank you to you for your volunteering your night, and especially thank you to staff. It is, this project has been a labor of love with staff. It's one of the first projects to come to fruition under the new ULUC. It has been a lot of time spent together coordinating on very significant engineering issues at great time and expense for both parties, and I would be remiss if I didn't express that gratitude. You have a wonderful staff who, we have fun together, we laugh, sometimes we cry, sometimes we get upset at each other, but I've always felt the spirit of collaboration, and I want to publicly thank them because, you know, they, it's sometimes a thankless job. So thank you all, and thank you again for giving us this opportunity. And all I ask is that we get a chance to finally actually develop this property. Don't tell any other city that we develop in, but this is our best piece of real estate, and we have the best opportunity here to do something unique. And I am so excited to do that, and but we can't do that without this process. So I ask that you give us that opportunity to do something special, to prove ourselves and to trust your staff and to trust the process that has been created through the ULUC. It is a very robust zoning document. You know, we will comply to all of its, every detail that applies to us, and I think because of the quality of this piece of real estate, we'll build just something that's really special that we all be very proud of. And I'm very excited to engage in that journey with you all over the next couple of years. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Unless there's any other comments from staff, I'd like to close the public hearing at 9:34 and entertain a motion on this resolution. All right. So this Commissioner Reynolds moved to approve PC Resolution 05-2022 approving the River Park Conceptual Master Development Plan with the conditions listed in the staff report and one additional condition clarifying that references to dwelling units on Sheet 4 are actually dwelling units per acre. Second?
Second?
Commissioner Miller? Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion. I think I'll start at the other end with you, Patrick.
On the three points, the criteria that, excuse me. On the three criteria, we're asked to evaluate this. I would, I'm in favor of it. In terms of layout, I think the city gains a lot of key improvements, the quad road, the cycle tracks, those kinds of things. I think the application shows a high degree of sensitivity to the surrounding areas, and so on layout seems to work for me. Quality of design, I thought the application showed enough expected architectural style information to get a picture of what they're aiming for. And they obviously have agreed to the city's code on materials and quality design that we have in our land use code, so it would be hard to say no on that basis here. As far as zoning conformance, everything in the application, in my view, conforms to our CM zoning, so I see no way of denying it on that basis. I would like to see the language that limits this development to things that are below the height and density limits removed. So I don't know if this is the point in which I propose an amendment. Jason has put one in his motion, but I'm just saying.
This is to eliminate the height restriction?
Yeah. That's my only concern is I don't think we need to have that language in the application. It could just be the zoning, the current zoning rules apply. And if they propose sustainability bonuses in three years as this road is being worked, it wouldn't cause an amendment, they have to come back to us for an amendment to that.
Okay, you certainly could propose an amendment, and then you need a second and a vote.
Yeah. Do I, do you want me to do that right now?
Yeah.
And there may be some use to having your full discussion first to see if that, if there are any other amendments or if you have support, but yes, you can formally do an amendment.
That's a good point, so remind me to come back.
But I just wanted to say, in general, I'm in favor of Jason's motion.
Okay, all right. Any other?
So that would be all I have to say.
Okay, Rob.
So the decision criteria for conceptual MDP is a little difficult. We're asked some specific questions about design of buildings, visual interest, aesthetic appeal, unique identity, integration of civic spaces, context and location, you know, for the layout. I'm not concerned about the zoning conformance. I feel like how it was presented in the written form did not clarify. It was through the discussion of that clarification that brought out to light answering the criteria for one and two. Question for our lawyer. The conversations that were had tonight that clarified, that are all now part of the public record, is what they will be, can be held to for the future when they do the site development plan, correct?
Correct. They are now part of the evidence and part of the record that you can base your decision on.
Yeah, with the clarification and discussion, I feel comfortable that the decision criteria has been answered appropriately.
Sure.
I feel like tonight, I agree with what was just said. I feel like tonight that, you know, we did have a lot of issues that we need to work on regarding growing pains around, you know, the plan, the ULUC and all that. And, but that's something I think that we could work on during study sessions, so this is not the place necessarily to bring that up. But, you know, we have some things to work on. I felt like, as we did, there were a lot of questions tonight. There was a lot of information, and that what was presented did give me a comfort level with what will happen with that property. So to the, you know, the criteria that we have to look at tonight, I feel that the applicant met those three decision points. And I just, you know, the only thing I wrote down was just, it was just difficult to separate the conceptual from the next set, step, which is site plan. And that's not something that, you know, you're required to do. So with that, I think they met the criteria. Thank you.
Thank you. Go down to David.
I want to thank everybody again for really doing a good job to try to help us through this. We've been saying it, but I really want to reiterate it for myself. Not the most artistic guy, and some more clarity down the road on the difference between a conceptual plan and everything would be very helpful because I think we asked a ton of questions that might be viewed as outside of the decision criteria, only to help us figure out how to answer the decision criteria, if that makes sense, you know. And so, but great job by everybody, and I think my questions have been answered. I think it's met the criteria as well for approval. So that's all I've got. Thanks. Oh, I'm sorry, I do have one last thing. To staff, in response to an amendment you may want on there, you do, if you do not accept the height or density increases that come as a reward for the sustainability, that does not preclude you from doing things sustainable, correct? I mean, I'm just asking, right? Like, you don't have to take the extra height to also, you know, be prepared to put solar panels on the roof or whatever. Is that a fair statement?
That's correct.
Right, okay, okay. So I just want to throw out to my fellow commissioners that my only objection to what you said there would be to leave it up to them, and if they want to stay within that height, it makes some of the citizens happy, and it also does not preclude them from doing the right thing when that time comes. That would just be my offering there. So, thank you.
Okay, Dan?
I'll reiterate what you said. Thank you to staff, and thank you to the applicant and your patience and working with, working with us as we work through the new ULUC. You know, just sort of thinking through this, to me, sort of the gist of this, of this request is really to lift that PLO designation. I mean, I know technically it right now is CM, but there's, there's other corridor mixed-use parcels in the city that could just be developed administratively. So there's a certain level of trust that's built into the code, that staff will, you know, use the code to evaluate and make decisions on development. So with that, I mean, I do find, just sort of agreeing with other people, that the three criteria in my mind are met for this conceptual level plan, and I will be voting yes this evening.
All right, Jason?
Thank you. So, you know, getting to the criteria, the layout provides the public street network within the development. It establishes the blocks. It establishes that incredibly important relationship between the public space and the private space, which will be implemented through all the design standards that apply, not just from the ULUC, which has a lengthy list of requirements, both in terms of minimum setbacks, maximum setbacks, and design elements to incorporate into the buildings, but also the illustrations that they included as a part of the MDP. And, you know, those address the quality design. The zoning district conformance, as others have said, there's nothing in the MDP that contradicts the zoning. The layout does provide that main street with the offshoot private access points, which are the subordinate to the main street element. Per testimony from the city's traffic engineer, the, the design of the quad road cannot just accommodate this development, but would actually improve the operation of the intersection even after the development condition is, after the development proceeds. So, you know, that addresses a lot of the concerns that we heard about traffic congestion. I'll cite a couple of policies, goals from the Comprehensive Plan Policy. Land Use in Character 5 talks about managing the land use patterns near our green ways to protect them, to prevent encroachment, maintain public access. And the proposed MDP does all of those things as evidenced by Colorado Parks and Wildlife having no concerns, and by the agreement with South Suburban Parks and Recreation for how the built environment and the trail and the landscape buffer will relate to the adjacent park. Goal number, Housing in Neighborhoods Number Five, talks about supporting, encouraging housing that supports choice and mobility. And even though the focus, you know, for this developer is, you know, a lot on commercial, it's commercial and mixed use entirely for three of the four parcels, there's a residential component, and this is proposing residential very near, an important light rail station, an important connection in our community. I will say on the proposal to remove the height restrictions, I do have, you know, perhaps one concern with that is that the applicant provided a massing study for the heights they're proposing today. You know, I think, you know, to support that, I'd want to, you know, understand the proposed, whether the proposed heights have a similar impact on, you know, on views. And I guess, you know, we can see where the discussion goes, you know, on that. And I think I will leave it there. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. And, yeah, I guess I'll sum up, and then we'll go back and see if you want to do an amendment. Yeah, you know, I go back to, and one of the members of the public had it on a slide, the master development plan is intended to illustrate and explain a proposed development in insufficient detail to enable informed review and decision-making. And that's, you know, that's kind of the sticking point for me here, is I'm not sure we quite got there. That said, you know, I think what we saw and the explanations from the developer and staff are, you know, provided quite a bit of clarity, answered the questions of the commission, I think addressed some of the concerns or most of the concerns of the public, consistent with what we've seen before, and, and actually states in there that it's going to comply with the ULUC and the requirements of the city. So to me, that's compelling enough to support it, but not make me extremely comfortable in supporting it. So, so what I would like to ask staff is that if there's any way that Planning Commission could be updated, you know, in some way in the future, either through just, you know, a requested study session or something that allows us to provide input or, you know, feel more comfortable. This is, as was stated by members of the public, is a very, very important and visible development for the city of Littleton. We think the developer is well-intentioned and is working through the process in the way that it's set up to be, but I don't think the process is quite mature enough to allow us to have that level of comfort. So it's a request for staff to, you know, consider additional updates. Not a condition. Let's see.
We're happy to do that.
Okay, well, thank you. And then, you know, I guess with respect to the relaxation of the height limits, I do have my concerns also, just because the application is predicated on that model and the heights are there, they're, it may be beneficial for that development. And I think if we, I guess I wouldn't support that amendment, so, but certainly could make it and see how it goes. So, so that's all I have. So, looking, looking to you, would you like to float the amendment?
Yeah, let me preface my, I'll get into the specifics of my motion in a second, but I'd like us to consider the fact that this isn't a relaxation of the zoning. It's actually just allowing it to be what it's zoned as. So that the language is just changing it from being kneecapped at some particularly arbitrary level set by Evergreen and just allowing it to be what it was designed and specified with in our land use code. We've already said that we allow 85 feet along, this is a six-lane freeway. It is really, really close to our one of two transit stops. If there's any place in Littleton that needs to have the sustainability bonuses gained for density, for, if there's any place where, where we want to have an exemplar of sustainable bonuses given, this is one of those locations. When, when this property is developed, it will stay relatively the same for 50, 60 years. We are basically locking in whatever we decide today into the future, and this is a very, very important spot in this, in the city. So I don't see this as lifting anything. I just see it as, if you, my change would be simply to look at their Page Four in the MDP, and under the development data where it says mixed-use density, instead of specifying a number, it would just be per zoning code with or without sustainability bonuses, or just per the existing code. Same thing, four lines down, building height, colon, instead of 65 feet maximum, it would just say per zoned agreement. These numbers may change as we go next year into policy discussions about what we want. They, it's hard to know where these numbers will be or what the new Inclusionary Housing Ordinance will offer developers for including affordable housing. So I don't see, I see it valuable for us not to have this come back to public process if the thing was 15 feet higher. We saw the massing study, if you want to bring that up, it'd be helpful. That, that view of the, the building massings, that was a 65-foot height. Okay, our zoning would allow 80, 81, something like that. That's one floor higher than those. Every single one of those massing studies had plenty of views. Views are not really a consideration or criteria anyway. That's a...
Could you just put it in the form of a motion?
Okay, so my motion would be to adjust the language of Page Four to say, under development data, density, colon, per zoning limits, per zoned limits for...
And I may suggest, tell me if this kind of captures what you are asking. If you did a motion to amend the MDP to remove the height limitations as set forth in the applic- If you did a motion to amend the MDP to remove the height limitations as set forth in the application, so long as they are consistent with current city code requirements. Does that cover it? Are you so moving to what I just said?
So moved.
Okay.
Language so moved.
Won't make you repeat me.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a passionate argument. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. So let's go around to finish your.
I don't, I think I've said all I need to say.
Okay.
I'll let you guys talk about it.
Any conversation, Robin?
I appreciate the comments made concerning this motion. As the developer understands what he wants for this piece of property, I am going to vote no and leave it what the developer has requested.
I really appreciate that you did make that. I guess in a way it's a concession, maybe not, to lower the heights. I feel like that's something, it was almost a trade-off, given the public comment that we've heard. I know you didn't have to do that, but I, I appreciate that you did that. And I just feel like why give you back more than what you asked for, so no. I'm going to vote no. Anyway, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, my, my fundamental belief is that if you needed it and wanted it, you had asked for it. And with all the public comments scared about heights and everything else, I'm inclined to also say no to this amendment and leave it at the heights you requested.
I was kind of perplexed why you didn't ask for the height, but that's your choice. Maybe you don't want to build high-rise. But I also, I also support the idea of, if that's something that comes down the road that they want to, if the council says, hey, we really do want to put more affordable housing in, in this location, we are sort of capping ourselves at 65 feet, so. I, I would be in support of it, underlying zoning, period.
Yes, I do appreciate that perspective about this isn't add, the proposal isn't to add anything. It's to, you know, acknowledge that we have zoning in Littleton and we should follow our zoning, which includes the height limits being proposed by Commissioner Santana. And, you know, I do think, you know, I agree on the, the imaging. It is, it would potentially just be one story and the developer may never choose to do so, never choose to build that. So, yeah, I, I could be swayed to a yes vote.
Okay. Well, I guess, going back to the, the fact that sustainability bonuses are still available even within the height limits that are established in the MDP, I think that was a question and answer. And also that the plans could be changed if there was an incentive or desire to go to a higher limit that would do an MDP amendment. So we still do have tools in the toolbox that'll allow that to happen. I'm kind of persuaded by the developer's choice to, to select that height limit. You know, I've been around this community long enough to know how sensitive people are to heights. And I know views aren't legislated, but it's all impact on people's views and, and the sort of scale. It's really more about scale. So we have a plan. I'm, I'm inclined to not support that, that motion, but just.
One other thing adds, just on the, the public testimony tonight, I didn't hear any concerns about massing.
Yeah, good point. Okay, are we ready to vote? Vote, just on the amendment? Okay. Is everybody in? I think seat two.
Keep pressing.
I believe that is Commissioner Holdley.
No, I'm six.
Oh, you're six, okay.
No, I put a minus, hang on.
But we didn't get everybody's vote.
Well, now we have a question because if I am seat six, I voted no, and that shows a plus.
Okay, I'm going to just reopen this again if I can do that. So it's open again for.
Okay, so I must be two. Let's see if that.
Okay, all right. Okay, let's, let's see how we did here. Oh. Does that make sense?
The vote is three in favor with Commissioners Holdley, Almond, McFadden, and Coronado voting no.
Okay, so the.
Is that correct?
The amendment does not carry.
The amendment fails.
Failed, okay. So we'll go back to the original motion. Are we ready to vote on the original motion, which is the resolution? Do we need to repeat it or is everybody good? Okay, so I'm going to put that up for vote now? Okay, oh, wait, okay, no. Everybody's voted?
The vote is seven in favor, the motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Thank you all. A thank you to applicant, to staff, to the folks that came up and stayed up here, provided some really strong testimony that we considered. I did want to also mention that there were a number of other written comments that came in. I would say probably a good representation of for and against, there, there were both. So thank you for all that input. Before we leave, just any general business from staff or commissioners? Staff first?
Yes, I wanted to let everyone know that we've got the State American Planning Association Conference this week. There are two planning commissioners attending and, oh. Oh, yeah, okay. Okay, super, well.
We're just not paying for him.
Yeah. Yeah, right, we do have a session, so.
Is it on the ULUC or?
Yeah.
Okay, I wish I was going now.
Yeah, so the, yeah, that should be, should be an interesting time at the, at the session. Hopefully we'll bring back some, some good information that we can implement here in Littleton, best practices and that type of thing. So really looking forward to that. Did you have any other? Oh, yes, just a quick update on Toll Brothers. We do have several applications in for that, for that parcel. One is a, a site development plan for 260 single-family A-tatched dwellings and a multifamily apartment that is in flux right now as to how many units that would be in the multifamily piece. There's also a second phase of the single-family A-tached product that, that is in for review. And a plan development amendment that is under the old Santa Fe Park zoning. So several different applications are, are in review for that right now. And just wanted to give you an update. It sounds like we are moving forward at a pretty good clip with, with the main application that would plat the land. You, you approved a preliminary plat for this project. Yeah, I think in 2021. It's been a little while and we've hit a few hurdles, but we're figuring those out. And it seems to be moving forward. Any other updates, Jen?
Okay. Do we have any scheduled meetings in October?
We do have a study session for the 2023 Work Program that is for the late October meeting. I think that is the 24th. Yeah, 24th, I believe it is. No meeting on the 10th, that's been canceled.
Okay. All right, great.
Wendy, do I have that date right, is it October 24th? Okay, thank you. No other updates.
Okay. Anything from commissioners? If not, I, I just wanted to say one, one thing there. I just read this morning that one of the planners that really had a lot of influence in city of Littleton, for the old timers of us that have been here for a while, is Tom Christopite. And I understand he passed away early this, earlier this month. And I just wanted to recognize him as somebody that really contributed a lot to our community. I think in terms of volunteer work, he ran a planning academy that helped train both staff and planning commissioners and council people and, and so on. He was a really, really smart guy that I learned a lot from. And so just wanted to recognize his passing. Thank you, everybody.
Just need you to close the meeting.
Can you adjourn the meeting?
Yeah, thank you.